Okay, good morning. It is Tuesday, May 16th. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Board of Supervisors meeting. If I can ask for a roll call to establish forum, please.
Supervisor Bronson.
Here.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Present.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Griehova.
Here.
Let the record show all board members are present.
Thank you. For the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Tashara Jordan. She's a Program Specialist from Community Workforce Development, and I'm just going to say a little bit about you while you're there. So she works in Community Assistance Division, a CWD, and has been with the department since 2022, working as a caseworker on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The Arizona Department of Economic Security recently recognized Ms. Jordan as a February 2023 Navigator of the Month for her consistency providing top-notch service to her clients and helping to ensure families stay housed and landlords are made whole. Thank you so much for all your work, Ms. Jordan.
My pleasure.
And I'm going to give it to her.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next, we have the Land Acknowledgement Statement to be offered by Natalie Morioki. She's a case manager, the law offices of Rachel Wilson, immigration attorney.
My name is Natalie, and I work with the Law Office of Rachel Wilson. We're an immigration law office helping people obtain their residency or their citizenship. I'm very happy to be able to help the immigrant community, and thank you for having me here. I will now present the Land Acknowledgement Statement. On behalf of the Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tohono O'لا Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Vascoa Yaki Tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive towards building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. Thank you.
Nice, thank you, Ms. Morioki. And now we have pause for pause.
My friend, longest stay resident here at PAC, and we're not really sure why, other than he's one of the dogs that we have no information about how he is in a home. He's spent the entire year here at PAC. So we are looking for an adoptive foster for this sweet boy to get him out of the shelter. We would love to get him into a permanent home, but even a two-week foster or weekend getaway would be so amazing, so we know more about him, so we can best place him with a permanent family. If you're not ready to take home a big dog, we do need fosters for bottle-bait kittens, kittens that are just not quite old enough, that are eating on their own, and then puppies. We've got lots of puppies, too. So if you're looking for something to do this summer, come on down to PAC and foster or adopt a pet. Adoption fees are waived in all cases, and then reclaim fees. If you've lost your pet and you think your pet's here, come on down and look, and reclaim fees are waived in most cases, as well as we'll give you a free spay and neuter along with that. So anyways, we hope to see you guys soon. We have hundreds of dogs and cats here looking for homes, both foster and adoptive homes, and we'd love to see you. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Now Supervisor Scott requested a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you, Chair Griehova, and would like to ask Mark Hanna and Aiden Bareaz from the Metropolitan Education Commission to come forward for a special presentation.
Thank you, Board Member Scott, and good morning, Board members and Chair Griehova and Board staff and members of the audience. So I'm here from Metropolitan Education Commission. I am one of the members of the Metropolitan Education Commission. With me are Dr. Tria Allen and Superintendent, J. Ted Superintendent Kathy Prather and Aiden Bareaz, who all represent in the Metropolitan Education Commission. So I am honored to present the Metropolitan Education Commission Lifetime Achievement Award 2023 to Supervisor Adalita Griehova. All right, so usually lifetime achievement awards mean that you are old. In this case, Adalita has already accomplished a lifetime amount of achievements at a young age. Under the leadership of MEC Chair Chuck Ford in 1991, the Metropolitan Education Commission established the Crystal Apple Awards. The goal for these awards was to bring education, business, government, and community together to support K-20 education in Tucson and Pima County. The awards are designed by MEC Commissioner Carl Morton, who represented the Tucson Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. Through the years, they have grown to several distinct categories, including youth, citizenship, corporate, teacher, small business, education, advocate, counselor, community, and lifetime achievement. Today, the MEC is honored to present the Lifetime Achievement Award to a remarkable citizen leader who's devoted her life to service, community, and broadening access and equity throughout Pima County. She is a native Tucsonan, educated through Tucson Unified School District and the University of Arizona. She is continuing to improving the quality of life for our Pima County community. She served on the TUSD Governing Board for 20 years and shares the honor of being the longest-serving TUSD Board with only one other person. Her leadership was responsible for preschools in every TUSD elementary school. She was fiscally responsible and responsive to the community. She was elected in November 2020 to the Pima County Board of Supervisors in District Five to a four-year term and is the first Latina elected to this position. She now serves as chair. She makes a strong commitment to working with the community to create a coalition to address the biggest issues facing Pima County, including but not limited to housing people can afford, education, climate, water resiliency, and healthy and safe communities. As a leader, she has chosen to lead the charge, provide temporary shelter for migrants crossing the border. She has also served as Director of Pima County Teen Court, a nonprofit juvenile court diversion program for more than 25 years before beginning her service as a Pima County Supervisor. That position helped her to understand the collaborations and coalitions that involve nonprofit business and government can bring about the best benefits. She also serves as a volunteer board member for the YWCA of Southern Arizona. Lastly, she serves as a commissioner for the Metropolitan Education Commission, and earlier this month, on a Sunday afternoon, she met with 13 Youth Advisory Council members to help them practice their advocacy skills. Adalita symbolizes what is best in leadership for education in Tucson and Pima County. She is unselfish and gracious. She cares deeply for families living in poverty. She is more than deserving of this honor and recognition. The MEC is delighted to present the Lifetime Achievement Award to Supervisor and Chair Adalita Griehova.
Chair Griehova.
Yes.
I wanted to thank our clerk, Ms. Manriquez, for helping me to be sneaky.
Oh, nice, thank you. He calls me yesterday and says, I want a point of personal privilege. I'm like, okay, you could just ask for it, but I appreciate that. Thank you so much. It's very thoughtful. Okay, so now we're moving on to call to the public. Oh, I apologize. Oh, go ahead. And our clerk, hang on, our clerk is going to go ahead and document the changes. Sorry.
On the regular agenda, page five, item 15, the executive session regarding legal review of the conditional use approval process. The county attorney's office requests this item be removed from the agenda. On page six, item 20, county administrator, the update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety. This item will be heard at a time cern of 10:30. On page six, item 24, county attorney, the proposed settlement with Torres Blanca's golf course. This item will be heard following executive session. On page nine, item 42, hearing liquor license for Morana Farm Festivals LLC. The applicant requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors meeting of June 20th. And on the addendum, page two, item seven, county administrator, update on ending of Title 42 in Pima County. This item will be heard at a time cern of 11:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. Without any objections, we'll go ahead and make those changes on the agenda. And now we're on to call to the public. All right. So citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistling yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. And with that, we'll go ahead and call up Ray Carroll, judge and former supervisor, Sharon Green, and Tim Lox. Thank you.
Very good morning. I'm here this morning to discuss a budget item. I'm happy to be on at this point. We will go right back to work after we're done with this short presentation, so thank you for your patience in advance. My name is Ray Carroll. I'm the Justice of the Peace in Green Valley Precinct 7. Let me straighten my tie. Thank you. I certainly thought I'd bring some light reading while I waited to be part. Actually, I thought they said political survival tips, tricks, but oh, my dog, it turns out I'm dyslexic. So what we're going to do instead is go through my budget supplemental. Are you all seeing that? Okay, did I get this in the right spot, if there's a graph? Yes, ma'am?
If we can turn that camera on, great, thank you.
Well, thank you again. This is a request for a supplemental. Last year, we went through a big reset, the court. We have been reprecincted, and we took about 30,000-plus people from Doug Taylor's former Justice of the Precinct. So what we're doing now is having the growing pains of such growth. We expanded our territory, which is great, and we're providing good services, similar to those types of services that we find were necessary in our really rural 55-plus communities, as well as some suburban in Sarita. A lot of people don't have access to justice. Maybe it's because of COVID period, or maybe it was because of limitations on internet access and travel access. A lot of the people that we're reaching out to right now in Vail are certainly not happy to hear from us. We're sending out orders to show cause, like I did when I first came down to Green Valley. We wanted to wake up some of those sleeping cases, especially only priority being domestic violence and alcoholism. We don't hate alcoholics, we hate alcoholism. Uh-oh, my time's up. Let's get on with it. Here's a minute. Here's a laser version of my memo. I handed it out to you, the times are dour, doleful, dismal, depressed. I know they're tough, but I'm asking for $61,000-plus. We've got a lot of good ideas to give you where the money was spent, but mostly last year, you had a very generous supply of money for us, for our security, and for some cameras, and our workload increased by almost 50% this year. So those things came in handy, and they made us safer, and they made us more accessible. I'm still doing community outreach, going to Aravaca, going to Vail. Those are outlined courts that really need an ombudsman, someone like me, to go out there and help them either solve a warrant or get on a payment plan. The only other thing I want to remind you is there are promises made about me taking over this precinct, and we talked about this possibly being a factor, so I'm hoping that you'll meet my request and give me that money so we can have it. Thank you for the three.
Thank you. Sharon Green.
I'm Sharon Green. I'm a resident of Pima County and a retired RN. During the acute COVID crisis, I coordinated early care for those who had COVID. I assisted an RN friend in being discharged from the hospital to get proper care for treatment and not be killed there. The government policies for treatment of COVID were killing many of our hospitalized patients. Hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin were not allowed to be used in many hospitalized patients despite many studies from around the world proving their benefit. Early treatment with these and other medications resulted in a good outcome for beating COVID. On the other hand, the policy to treat people with remdesivir in the hospital resulted in kidney failure and death in more than 50% of patients for whom it was prescribed. French teenagers were killing COVID patients, and yet the government reimbursed hospitals with funding them if they used it on COVID patients. Doctors were threatened by medical boards if they prescribed HCQ or ivermectin. Pharmacies were part of this medical tyranny and refused to fill these two prescriptions. Despite the fact that COVID rarely caused serious illness in children, children are not allowed to attend school. The amount of damage caused to normal growth and development of our children will take years to resolve. French Nobel Prize winner of a French Nobel Prize winner reported numerous times that the COVID-19 shots promote the development of even deadlier vaccine-borne variants. In fact, countries who did not give their population COVID shots ended their COVID pandemic sooner by giving their people early treatment with ivermectin. Paper masks have never been effective in preventing the spread of viruses. The viral particles are so small, they go right through the mask. A comparison is like a BB going through a cyclone fence. Wearing a mask can contribute to illness. Masks are simply a control mechanism by those in charge. In August of 2022, the CDC reported that COVID shots were ineffective in preventing COVID and in transmission. The VAERS data basically says that over 300,000 people have died from the shots and 3 million people have been permanently injured in the United States, including my own nephew, who is 33. After a second COVID shot, he sustained severe neurological damage and is totally disabled. The truth is, COVID became disease of the vaccinated, not the unvaccinated. Vaccinated filled up our hospitals and were dying. Those who had early treatment survived. If this Pima County Board of Supervisors cannot or will not follow the real science and never issue another mandate, it is time for you to resign. Pima County deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Lox.
Morning, my name is Tim Lox. Welcome, Matt. Glad you could make it. I'm here for Agenda Item 13 and 14. $265 million deficit for the proposed budget. I suppose you want to make this deficit up by raising property taxes, Jan. Since you're a college graduate, I'm assuming that you took an economics class. It would seem that you missed the day when it was explained to you that by taking more money out of people's pockets, there's less money out on the market to create jobs. People have less money to spend. We're all being asked to tighten our belts during this last, the first two years, four months of this selected and not elected maladministration in Washington. They have spent more money during that time than in the previous 100 years combined. I don't know if you knew that, but it's true. You might want to check that out. Okay, so here's the problem. You want to take people, money, more money out of people's pockets. Where does that leave us? We're already being asked. We've got 300 refineries in this country, yet our gas prices down here are actually now more than the price of diesel, which it's not been that way for a long time, yet oil hovers right around about $70 a gallon, or a barrel, rather. It's time to fix it, Jan. Cut the crap. Fix the budget. You shouldn't be taking more money from us when we have other problems that need to be resolved. If you need to raise property taxes, why don't you give that money to Chris Nanos so he can fight all the fentanyl trafficking, which leads to the next thing. Okay, so this is another thing you never knew about me. Christmas morning, 2018, my son Benjamin, who would have been 30 years old about four days ago, died from a heroin overdose, right here in Tucson, at the old Palm Springs place there on Broadway or 22nd. I'm here to tell you, even the people at the rehab center that he just got out of said tough love doesn't work. Forcing people into rehab is not going to work. It doesn't work. You take a horse to the water, doesn't, you can't make him drink. You need a different solution. Putting up signs and forcing people into rehab is not the solution. You need to really think this and talk to the actual workers that deal with these people. Arizona used to have a six-month program for people going into rehab. Now it's down to three months. At least that's what I knew. Three months is not long enough to treat something where the problem is between the ears. You can't fix it in 90 days. So you want to really have a good, hard look at all this stuff. The only good news for my situation, my son is with God. He's in a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for your loss. I apologize. I jumped to the call to the audience, and we have two proclamations that are on the addendum. So we'll go back to the agenda and do proclamation. The first one on the addendum is presentation of proclamation to Kathy Jensen, co-lead Tucson Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, proclaiming the day of Friday, June 2, 2023, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in Pima County. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Is that an opposition? Yeah, okay. So the item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Supervisor Scott.
Chair Griehova, this is the third time that I have presented this resolution, and I appreciate my colleagues supporting it. I'm sorry, proclamation. And it was encouraged that I present it by Pat Mase, who is a constituent in District One and who many of us know is a community heroine. She wrestled away the ammunition clip from Jared Loughner on January 8, 2011, when he was getting ready to reload his gun and tried to shoot even more people at the safe way up at RNN Oracle. When I read the proclamation, I want you to consider the statistics that are cited and the fact that each number represents a person. I want you to listen to the fifth whereas, which says, "Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people who shouldn't have them." Because if we're ever going to confront gun violence... Because if we're ever going to confront gun violence in this country, we're going to have to balance the need to save lives with the interests of responsible, law-abiding gun owners. I want you to take a look at the next-to-last whereas, which says, "The idea of National Gun Violence Awareness Day came from a group of young people, the friends of Hadia Pendleton in Chicago, who was shot and killed in January of 2013." Because oftentimes, young people cause us to look at things in novel and enlightened ways. And the last sentence of this resolution, I'm sorry, proclamation, encourages all citizens to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. I think all of us can be supportive of these goals regardless of whether or not we have different steps in mind to achieve them. So at this point, I will read the proclamation.
What do you need me to do?
Hold the proclamation.
Okay. Yeah?
Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed and more than 200 are wounded in gun violence, and on average, there are more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Arizona has more than 1,200 gun deaths every year, and our state has the 18th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas protecting public safety is the Board of Supervisors' highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people who shouldn't have them. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever amid increased gun sales, a rise in calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and growth in city violence. And whereas in January 2013, 15-year-old Hadia Pendleton of Chicago was tragically shot and killed. To recognize what would have been Hadia's 26th birthday, on June 2, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2 to help raise awareness about gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Supervisors hereby proclaims Friday, June 2, 2023, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in Pima County, and encourages all citizens to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
We would encourage you to wear orange to support this. June 2 is a very special day for us. Over 120 people are killed by guns, and then we don't want to forget those wounded, about 250 wounded daily as well. And so it is our goal to work to prevent gun violence so that our communities can be safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Addendum Item 2 is a presentation of proclamation to Shannon Roberts, CEO of the Diaper Bank of Southern Arizona, Leanne Hernandez, Director, Women's Wellness, Empowerment and Leadership Center for the YWCA, and Monique Valeri, Director of Development for Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation. And then I'd like to ask Elvira Swartestin from our D5 office to come join us because the initial period poverty awareness drive was totally her idea, and she does it every year with partners, proclaiming the week of May 22 through 28, 2023, to be Period Poverty Awareness Week. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Hi. How's it going? Okay. All right. So these are going to be at how many places around town? These, over 20 so far. So if anyone wants one wherever they work, we're going to have one out here also. You can bring all of your donations of products, any new unopened packages of pads, tampons, liners, menstrual cups and pads for urinary inconsistency, any of the, I mean, anything really that would be beneficial, we will take. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas access to menstrual products is a basic human need for menstruators, and whereas menstrual equity means everyone who gets a period deserves access to menstrual products so they can thrive. And whereas local, state, and federal government policies often cause or exacerbate inequitable access to menstrual products by imposing sales tax on them, limiting access to these products, exempting menstrual products from health benefits programs, and not making these products uniformly available in public places such as schools and homeless shelters. And whereas period poverty disproportionately impacts menstruators of color. And whereas Pima County is home to trusted, community-based organizations such as the Diaper Bank of Southern Arizona, Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation, and YWCA Southern Arizona, that recognize the importance of period poverty and ensuring health and providing economic stability and thus distribute period products through various channels. Whereas these organizations, period supply banks, work on the front lines to serve Pima County residents and help families in our communities weather crises. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of May 22 through May 28, 2023, to be Period Poverty Awareness Week. And thanks to local period supply banks and their staff members and volunteers and donors for their service to the community, and encourages Pima County residents to donate generously to period supply banks, product drives, and those organizations that collect and distribute period products to those in need." Passed and adopted this 16th day of May 2023. Thank you. Who wants to say something? Anybody?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to this wonderful group of individuals behind us. We really appreciate it. Supervisor Gahalva, you've been a very instrumental part of helping us succeed. And again, I really want to thank you for taking care of your community and showing an unwavering amount of support. We could not do it without your support and the support of our community. So thank you.
And that should be that.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. And again, to Madam Chair and the board, thank you for all of your support, especially for those of us that work with folks that are underserved, underrecognized, and it takes true warriors to stand up and continue to fight. So thank you on behalf of all of those that we serve.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much to the board. We really appreciate your support over the years, and thank you, Alarita, as well, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I think this is a really important issue. I know it sometimes makes folks uncomfortable, but it is an important issue. Every month, it costs folks who menstruate about $70 to get these necessary supplies. And I think it's important to have that in context, that over a lifetime, a person who menstruates can spend up to $20,000 to $30,000 a year, over a lifetime. So I think it's important, and thank you so much for bringing light to this, Elvira. Thank you for your dedicated work and community. I appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, now we'll jump back to the call to the public. And we have Larry Starks, Steve Brown, and Howard Betschler.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Larry Starks. I'm the president of the Tucson Juneteenth Festival here in Tucson. We are the longest-running festival for African-Americans here in Southern Arizona. This is our 53rd year with our festival here. So I wanted to specifically address Item 21, but also address the need for what we're doing now at Tucson Juneteenth and the festivals here in Tucson and Southern Arizona. So for the first time in a long time, of course, we know it's a holiday, and what we've done is make sure that, not that we're able to celebrate, but we're able to educate people here on what Juneteenth is really about. So for the first time, we have a week-long series of events here for Pima County. Starting on June 10, we have a kickoff concert. June 11, we have a Gospel Jubilee at the Precinct Theater. June 15, we have Making a Black America Night, which is provided at the Loft Theater in association with Bank of America and PBS, where we'll be also honoring local historians for that night. And on the 16th, we're at the, what began at Vista del Pueblo Park on a mountain to help celebrate there. And on the 17th, we're going to have our large festival. This is the largest festival we've ever put together, is at Keno Sports Complex this year. So again, we're growing and moving. So with that being said, I also have, if you want to come up, on June 19, at the University of Arizona, they're having a series at the university, if you want to talk about that real quick.
Yes, so it is a free event for everyone. We are hosting Dr. Reverend Bernice King and Professor Ilyasa Shabaz. These are the daughters of MLK and Malcolm X, who will be on the stage the first time in Arizona to talk about what is justice in the 21st century. It is free for everyone. Tickets have to be acquired through Ticketmaster or the University of Arizona Centennial Hall site, but it is an open and free community, and we're serving edgy bites afterwards.
So again, what that shows is that we're partnering with everyone in Tucson and Pima County and Southern Arizona. We're bringing vendors from Phoenix. I have vendors from Gilbert, Arizona, Ashley, who's having their first ever Juneteenth celebration, and they called me to say, how can you help us? So I'm going down there to help them organize, and they're coming down here to bring visitors. We have two vans of churches coming down from Sierra Vista for our event on Sunday. So it's not just, again, just Pima County. We're really doing things for Southern Arizona. Of course, my goal for us is to eclipse Maricopa County, anything that they ever done. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And you're no longer at Kennedy Park. Those were fond memories.
No, we're at Keno Sports Complex. So we're, again, we're growing and moving, and my motto is, it's a movement, not a moment. So thank you.
Thank you. Steve Brown?
I'd like to respectfully request that someone go before us because I'm here together with another person to speak to Item 19. Could the two of us come up after the other folks speak, or should we go now?
Oh, I'm sorry, what is?
This is Rob Peters. I'm the new executive director.
Okay, let me go ahead and call the next speaker, and then we'll put you on both tapes. Thank you. I don't know. Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for letting me speak here. My name is Howard Beckler, 6224 South Barrister Road, Tucson, Arizona. This is in regards to P22RZ0004 Long Living Trust, 28 June 2022, now referred to as KB Homes. I want you to reconsider your decision to rezone the parcel. Pima County, with all the new construction, probably doesn't need that minor tax base. And have you looked at the property in question? Rolling hills filled with saguaro and other flora and an abundance of bird life and fauna, not so much now, as they have cut down at least three trees this morning with nesting birds in them. Once that natural treasure is gone, it's gone for good. It is never coming back, ever, and your decision makes that determination. Is the plan for the above-listed projects verified that it's in compliance with active management area, 100-year water resource provisions, the critical basin overall plan for Pima County and Southern Arizona, and the dark sky ordinance? Because when I went through the 105-page document provided by KB Homes, it was not. Additionally, a myth that the residents of this new community will be using Valencia Road is just that, a myth. They're going to be using Bilby Road, then Camino de la Tierra, or wait at the junction of Cardinal Road and turn right or left, which is a major undertaking even now. They will also tie up traffic junctions of Cardinal and Drexel Roads and Mission and Aho, and if you've seen that during the commute hours, you know the problem there. The plan includes no improvements for Bilby Road, and that's in Page 17, Section 1, Paragraph E, or other infrastructure. I also suggest that the council watch AZPM, PBS, Beyond the Mirage, and learn and think about the upcoming water situation for Pima County as you approve project after project. I'm not going to make it in the time here. We are representative democracy. I don't need to remind you that your constituency is the people, not $3.7 billion KB Homes. At the meeting to approve the rezoning, we did not get a chance to speak. We were told it would be put off until the following meeting, and however, KB Homes did. So I'm going to conclude here. I'll leave you a couple little paragraphs out here. In conclusion, the majority of the local residents ask that you rescind the zoning change for the parcel 3450 West Valencia Road and do not issue a building permit. Here is your opportunity to do something beneficial for the people you represent. Take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Peters, followed by Steve Brown and Eileen Wilson.
Hi. Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Rob Peters. I'm the new executive director of Save the Scenic Sanoritas. I'm here today with Steve Brown, colleague and board member, and Gail Hartman, past president of Save the Scenic Sanoritas. I want to explain why we think it's in the best interest of the residents of Pima County to support the resolution before you later on in this meeting, Number 202312, and to urge that you support it. The resolution opposes two new bills, one in the Senate and one in the House, that would pave the way for, among other things, Rosemont Copper World Mining Project of the Canadian company Hudbay Minerals to go forward. As you know well, the Pima County Board of Supervisors has a long history of opposing open-pit mining in the Santa Rita Mountains because of the harm it would cause to the economy, human health, and property values. Foremost, the mine would use an absolutely enormous amount of groundwater that would dry up residential wells. The projection is that it would suck up 13,000 acre feet of water per year, the amount used by 41,000 homes. The mine would threaten our children's health by depositing millions and possibly billions of tons of toxic waste near schools and homes. The mine would turn land that supports our recreation economy and wildlife into a profitless industrial wasteland. The mine would depress property values. Who would want to live near a devastated landscape like this and face water insecurity and decreased property values and health risks? We know that some potential buyers have already walked away from purchasing homes in the vicinity when they learned about the possibility of an open-pit mine. The two congressional bills would be devastating for natural lands and all the other issues that I just talked about, recreation, health, et cetera, throughout the West. But the area that we know best, of course, is here, the Sanoritas, near our homes. The two bills would overturn 150 years of legal precedent by allowing anyone, including foreign companies, to go onto our public land, stake their claim, pay a modest fee, and then be gifted the right to do anything reasonably incident to mining. And that means that they don't have to prove their minerals on the land, they just have to stake a claim to the land and have it incident to mining. And that includes using land for waste and tailing dumps, covering thousands of acres, roads, industrial pipelines, sulfuric acid plants, et cetera, regardless of the severe and permanent harm to our water supplies, public health, and economy. Finally, I'd like to point out, because sometimes the argument is made that copper is essential for our transition to renewable energy, but that copper, the purpose of the Rosemont Copper Mine is not in short supply, and it is not federally listed as a critical mineral. So there are other places this could come from. Finally, we want to...
Thank you. Thank you.
have already walked away from purchasing homes in the vicinity when they learned about the possibility of an open-pit mine. The two congressional bills would be devastating for natural lands and all the other issues that I just talked about, recreation, health, et cetera, throughout the West. But the area that we know best, of course, is here, the Santa Rita's near our homes. The two bills would overturn 150 years of legal precedent by allowing anyone, including foreign companies, to go onto our public land, stake their claim, pay a modest fee, and then be gifted the right to do anything reasonably incident to mining. And that means that they don't have to prove their minerals on the land, they just have to stake a claim to the land and have it incident to mining. And that includes using land for waste and tailing dumps, covering thousands of acres, roads, industrial pipelines, sulfuric acid plants, et cetera, regardless of the severe and permanent harm to our water supplies, public health, and economy. Finally, I'd like to point out, because sometimes the argument is made that copper is essential for our transition to renewable energy, but that copper, the purpose of the Rosemont Copper Mine is not in short supply, and it is not federally listed as a critical mineral. So there are other places this could come from. Finally, we want...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Steve Brown.
Well, thank you to the supervisors for these moments to share with you. My name is Steve Brown, and I live in Barrio Menlo Park. I'm a Tucson native and a retired educator. I serve on the Board of Directors of Save the Scenic Santa Rita's, and I'm here to support Dr. Rob Peters, our executive director, and to affirm that our board joins him in our assertion that the Santa Rita's are simply the wrong place for a mining complex such as this in Pima County. My goal this morning is to add one rather non-scientific piece of data to the data that your great staff has assembled of professional research on water quality, air quality, land use, long-term regional economic stability. The one piece that I'm going to add of non-scientific data is to affirm that for generations of people who have lived, now live, or may someday live in Pima County, the Santa Rita's are sacred ground. Santa Rita's are certainly sacred for me. I grew up and lived until my twenties on the Santa Rita Ranch on Box Canyon Road. The Santa Rita's are sacred for lots of families who ranch, or farm, or hike, or hunt, or off-road, or picnic, or bike, or birdwatch, or simply go to recover a sense of peace and quiet in the Santa Rita's. Sunday was Mother's Day. Lots of multi-generational Pima County families, like mine, spend Mother's Day in the Santa Rita's. Families such as ours don't invest billions of dollars to despoil the Santa Rita's. Rather, we devote our time and energy to care for these beautiful mountains. And I want to share first one last thought. Sacred is a fascinating concept. Some say it has to do with light. Light inspires people of many cultures all over the world, and the light that falls on the Santa Rita's is a product of its latitude. I invite you to ponder with me for a moment the latitude of Helvetia and the Rosemont Valley, 31.8 north latitude. I believe it's not a coincidence that this is the same latitude as Jerusalem and further east of the traditional historic home of the Dalai Lama in Tibet. In the generations to come, this multitude of families in Pima County who love the Santa Rita's will never desecrate or abandon them. We are touched by the light there. Can Hudbay say the same? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ellen Wilson, followed by Sharon Fikes, Chisela Aaron, and Corey Stevens.
Good morning. My name is Eileen Wilson. I am a proud Republican. This is my granddaughter, Delilah. She is also a proud Republican. I, thank you. I am from Legislative District 19, and I have the honor of being in District 4 with my hero, Steve Christie. And I stand before all of you today to ask if you have children, grandchildren, nieces, nephew, because when you consider your spending, especially when it comes down to the illegal wetbacks, you have a duty and a responsibility to our children, to our grandchildren, moving forward. These are the innocents, and you need to leave Pima County in a better place for all of them. Thank you.
Sharon Fikes.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sharon Fickers, a legal resident of Pima County, District 4. I want to make sure that I say a special welcome to Dr. Hines. I'm glad to see you out of your Hollywood Square enjoying this in person. It's a lovely addition. I want to make sure that you know when I refer to the Squad of Four, I'm referring to Bronson, Hines, Scott, and Grohava, because I know you vote lockstep and join each other at the hip. Two or three meetings ago, I believe it was a Tim, I forget his last name, he's a reporter from a local, and he stopped me to ask me, why are there so many conservative voices here? Where's the liberals? Where's the Democrats? And I said, why are you asking me? I'm a conservative. I'm a constitutionalist. I'm a Christian. You're asking the wrong person. I said, why don't you go out in the streets and find the people who are causing problems? Why don't you go there? He said, it makes no sense. Why aren't they here supporting? And he named your names. I said, that's why, because they have the Squad of Four doing everything they want for any liberal cause they're promoting. Only three minutes for us on our call to the public. It's really not enough. And why is that? Because a lot of times, you don't pay attention to us. You're sitting there shuffling papers. I don't know what you're doing back there. So today, I brought a few of our older signs to remind you what we're asking you to do. So if you don't listen to us, maybe you can read. Maybe you can read, we want the border secured. We want the human trafficking to stop. We want you not to support the Biden administration. The Biden Democrats, they're causing a lot of our illegal invasion. We're being invaded. I live in the southern part of Pima County. I live not far from that border. You think it's not a problem? You probably haven't visited. It's a problem. And it's going to double. Is it going to double? We hear stories about that. Does that mean you're going to give them twice as much money? Is that what you're going forward? And then another one, we had up, Rex Scott, we wanted you to go away. So my comment is that the three minutes is not enough for us. I understand, we have a big agenda. We're always covering certain things. But for like-minded people that want to talk and invite you to speak to them, come on over to Firetruck Brewery today, 4 o'clock. We're going to all talk. You have an invitation. Join us. There's like-minded people there. As always, I want you to know, I'm working hard to remove you from office. That election is only a little more than a year away, and I'm working hard for that. I wish you a good day.
Good morning. My name is Chisela Aaron, and I live in Rita Ranch. Looking at the budget, revenue minus expenses leaves us a shortfall of $265 million, unfortunately. So I see you have $648 million in intergovernmental, you hope to get intergovernmental grants. That's not good to rely on that money, because you don't know if you actually get it. Common sense. Pima County residents should not have to pay higher property taxes because of your mismanagement. And the law calls this home stealing. It's called home stealing. I urge you to vote no on any races, you know, the property values, until you can manage the budget more responsibly. Cut the Fed out. Your overreliance, like I said, on the intergovernmental dollars is reprehensible. Forty-three percent of the budget coming from intergovernmental agreements, that's not good. It means that you surrender local rights and local law to federal government. I say no. Consider how you will be able to get tourist dollars also, since you polluted the natural desert beauty with nearly 500 cell phone towers. Nobody wants to see that in pictures or in your neighborhoods. Cell towers are endangering your children, your grandchildren. Realtors have found that home values decrease more than 20% near cell phone towers, and that's again called home stealing. I challenge you to contact the UofA Finance Department or the School of Public Administration and Policy to look at the budget and give you a small, have them look at it, give them maybe a small price for solutions where you can cut, where you can maybe increase to get the most out of your revenue. A fresh new look would not hurt, and it might solve some of the chronic money woes. My second is the American battery factory, the Gigafactory on the east side. Have you done your due diligence and commissioned an environmental impact study? As you know, the city of Tucson is sinking more than 20 inches, more than several inches per year due to overpumping. Reports say that 600 gallons of water are used for one car battery. Where will AMF get their water? What is their plan to safeguard us from the environment, the runoff, toxic runoff? What about, how will you safeguard and dispose toxic water containing lithium, magnesium, and cobalt? What's the plan? In case there's an industrial toxic accident, have you thought about that? Importantly, don't raise our water rates because of this, if they pump us dry. It would have been safer decision to allow Grand Canyon University to build a campus here, but that would have brought employment, competition, and money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Ezo, Ezel. Thank you. Anastasia Zatakis and Dave Smith.
My name is Robert Ezo, and I live at 6425 West Pinto Road in Wrangler Ranch, number one. I'm here in regards to seeing that, trying to get Pima Mine Road paved from where I live, from Mission Road to Avenue DK. It's in terrible shape. Most of the time, we, as a matter of fact, they clear the shoulders on it, and a lot of times, we ride on the dirt, because there's less bumps than there is on the road itself. But anyway, there's no doubt that the mining company is going to come across the road soon, because you hear them blasting, and they keep moving the pit. You can look on Google Earth and see it. And for some mysterious reason, the last county manager paved the road there from the cattle garb, which is right near Pima Mine Road, all the way to Sarita Mountain Road. Then they went over and they, I got to get, I don't write very good. And they also paved Sarita Mountain Road from Mission Road all the way to Lacanada Road, not Lacanada, Lacanada Road with the light. And they, and over in the, in Curlyhorn, they even paved the road that goes to nowhere. And I was told the residents paid for it somehow. I don't know how they did that. But anyway, they got their road on trust, on Cali Trust there, also paved. And we're still left behind over there. All they do is come over and fill in the potholes and that kind of thing. And it seems to me it'd be a lot cheaper instead of wasting county employees' time filling those holes and maintaining that road, but to pave it. And they have a thing called a green asphalt that Sarita, the city of Sarita is using. They don't have to, the old way, you'd have to tear the road apart and put the new paving on, I guess. But now they got this green asphalt, which is made from, I heard tires, I believe. And I was wondering if they could use that on the road. In fact, they sent an email to Pima County and asking them about it, never got a response. But we dearly need that road paved. Our cars are getting tore up. Ray Carroll even knew about it. He was just up here. He mentioned it to me one day. Anyway, they seem, the developers down in Sarita, where all the million-dollar properties are at, they seem to get everything they want, you know? I mean, they have the CAP water, which we don't get any of that. We don't get any CAP water. They put in an e-library, and they charge us taxes for it. I don't use the e-library. I don't even like an e-library. I like a regular, traditional library. Anyway, I, it really upsets me. Why do I pay for taxes in the city of Sarita, you know? And for an e-library and CAP water, we don't even use. Now, if that's the case, why can't they pave our doggone road?
Thank you. Thank you. Corey Stevens, I'm sorry. If I call your name, if you're close, if you can sit up here, then I'll remember not to go on before I call more people. Thank you.
Corey Stevens, District 2. No, thank you, Matt Hines. With the expiration of Title 42, Title 8 is its replacement. As you know, most asylum seekers claim persecution. Title 8 is very clear and stringent in those guidelines. I will paraphrase in the interest of time some of the most important definitions of persecution as Title 8 explains it. This is a severe level of harm. The infliction of severe level harm by its definition is by the government of country or by persons or an organization that the government was unable, unwilling to control. Persecution is an extreme concept involving a severe level of harm that includes actions so severe that they constitute an exigent threat. Persecution does not encompass the generalized harm that arises out of civil, criminal, or military strife in a country, nor does it encompass all threats that the United States regard as unfair, offensive, unjust, or even unlawful or unconstitutional. It does not include intermittent harassment, including brief detentions, threats with no actual effort to carry out the threats, non-severe economic harm or property damage. Those at our border not have faced persecution as defined by Title 8 or experienced like that of the Jews, like my family, or the Rohingya Muslims, or the Uighurs of China, like my mother's family in China. The fact is, illegal asylum seekers enter the country under false pretenses. It has nothing to do with climate change. They are given a notice to appear, which is seven years or more delayed because of the bureaucracy. They are not vetted, as we have murderers like Francisco or Pesa, and sponsors are not verified. What we are seeing happen with illegal immigration is a modern-day Cloward and Piven strategy. Leftist political ideologists from the Democratic Party using the immigration system to overload the United States welfare system in order to precipitate a crisis and manifest socialism. Republicans see a crisis. Democrats see potential voters. You must only look back to the Immigration Act of 1965 and Lyndon B. Johnson, the Democratic president, who promised Americans and black communities free welfare for their votes, to see the pattern of this, which is socialism and, dare I say, racist behavior. It's time we enforce the law as written and hold those accountable who are willing to ignore it. Four of you on this board have voted to perpetuate this catastrophe. We must end it now. We cannot perpetuate the crisis, okay? End it.
Anastasia Zatakis.
Okay. How dare all of you. I am here today to speak on the tens of thousands of people who have been complaining to you for a very long time about a great many things. This proclamation of this Gun Violence Awareness Day in Pima County, disgusting and pathetic. We will not be allowed to have these people put on us and try to take away our gun rights like you, Rex Scott, tried to do a few board meetings ago, if you recall that debacle. The Secure Border Act of 2023, look it up. You guys need to do your research and do some reading. We are facing a critical juncture. This Title 42 and Title 8, Title 42 was only for COVID era. I'm so sick of that word. Immigration and restriction, we have federal laws for that. Why don't you just follow them? How about that for once? And how dare you have taken advantage of every worker here in Pima County during the COVID era? You fired them. You chastised them. You forced people to get exceptions and medical exemptions that we actually helped thousands of people get so they could salvage their jobs. To what end? They were fired. They lost their pensions. They lost their livelihoods. They lost their houses. Many of them. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. Did you all lose your jobs, Mr. cushy hundred thousand some dollar a year job? Did you, Mr. Hines? Did you, Ms. Adalita? No, you didn't. My husband lost his federal job because of you and others like you. I am so sick and tired of this. And now you're going and you're rehiring these people? I hope to God they tell you to F you in a big way, because shame on you. And if they do come back, I hope they get a lot of money out of you. And if they don't get the money out of you, I hope they sue the pants off of you for what you did illegally to these people. It should have been a choice, not a mandate. Environmental Protection Agency, Environmental Justice Grant Awards, for what? Health officials, again? You're going to do water surveillance? Check people's poop in the sewers for COVID again? I think what you're going to find is that ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine would suffice just fine. Not mandates, not masks, not the mandated jab, which has now actually sterilized a lot of women, Matt. And they're sterilizing young girls like that because now they wanted to go after the babies and sterilize them too for population control. Y'all need to wake up. You all have dereliction of duty, and you need to go to prison.
Dave Smith. And then we have ML King, Elizabeth Moll, and Ambrose.
There's my mic. Yeah, there, I was going to come up here as the chairman of the party and talk to you about border security and everybody's doing a better job than I could. So I was going to talk to you, Dave Smith, Pima County citizen, okay? I want you all to think about your legacy here, listening to all this. Is there not, is there no liberal movement you can't support? I mean, you just literally have no limits on how idiotic some of your ideas are. Guns don't commit crime. People do. We know how to solve crime. We've known it. In 1994, I was the Director of Education for Law Enforcement Television Network and I interviewed all kinds of politicians. It was a national, it was the CNN for cops back then, when CNN actually did news, if you remember. But the thing was, is that we knew what the root cause of crime. It's criminality. And it's, it's a very small percentage of people commit the crimes. And you put them in jail and the crimes go away. And sometimes the only way to eliminate criminality is like you bake wine. You gotta store it for a while. You store a criminal at about 45 criminality drops. But you know, that's the whole thing. I want you to think about your legacies. Right there, you got a lieutenant and sergeant. These guys, their legacy is public service. They will die to keep you alive. Will you do anything to protect the community at large? You are a niche group. Your legacy is going to be, you have picked narrow ideas and narrow groups as your own, hoping that creates this collective welfare that's not going to occur. The border is open. What is going to be the legacy of that? What disaster? How many terrorists? How many criminals? This is the illiterate of the world racing to our country to feed off our welfare system. Even a libertarian like Milton Friedman says you can't have open borders and a welfare system. Do you ever stop to think his legacy? Steve Christie is one who thinks he's pensive. And that's what I want. And Sharon jumps on board with him from time to time and has to play the adult as well. And again, I came up here, I came up here to speak about this Title 42 ending. You know, the laws didn't go away. But again, this odd fascist idea that somehow the law is subordinate to authority is wrong. COVID gave you some odd arrogance. And that's the only thing I can see. Lose it. Go back to your constitutional requirements. The law dictates you and the constitution dictates the law. And listen to each other. Think about it. What is your legacy going to be? Public service or idiocy? Please, think about, I sit here and I just get mad because I came in here to talk about the border. And my cohorts, my brothers and sisters are doing a better job than I can about that. But I beg you, think about the welfare of all of our people in this county. Thank you.
M.L. King.
Betty Thompson, District Four. I have the privilege of serving.
I'm sorry, I had M.L. King.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No, that's okay. Yeah. Well, I am speaking, I'm repeating. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
If all of us can't hear you, then it doesn't happen. My name is Michael King, M.L. King, Reverend, a chaplain in the Army, Green Beret. Now, I'm going to state to you guys, I wanted to come up and honestly, I wanted to do what Anastasia and Dave just did. I want to jump you guys for not taking, I'm sorry, did, can I wait until Mr. Matt Hines comes back? Why?
Your time is continuing, so we can hear you.
Okay. Since, since you don't want to be fair, I'll, I'll be fair. I want to help you all, except you, Steve. I'm sorry, I can't, I think you're doing the right thing, but with the rest of you, I don't. And so I do want to help you, although I'm very upset with you because you don't know how much you're doing to drive a wedge between everybody here. This young man right here, who normally sits there or plays at home, has done more to be arrogant and use a hubris that has done more to create this. I gotta tell you, Garrett Lewis has done, gotten more listenership because of you all and him because you won't listen to us. I don't know if it's because you think you're more intelligent. I've got a master's degree. I have a 126-hour master's degree, not 60. But you think you're more enlightened, wiser, better? You're not. You are us. The only problem is, is you refuse to listen to us. As soon as she says something, Rex, you just jump in like that with a second. Do you think about it? I hope you do. I hope you do. I would like to think you do. But I don't get that pressure. So why? What is it that's motivating you to do the things that you're doing? Do you really think that you're helping? I mean, you sit on with the Board of the YWCA, you do all these things. That's wonderful. But the other policies and things that you all are enacting, and I'm a recent, recently moved here, almost two years ago, and yes, I live in your district. Thank you. So what is it? What is it that's making you do what you're doing? Because you're hurting people. You say you love people and you care about them, yet the things that you're doing are hurting them. In fact, you're impoverishing them even more than where they started before you all got here. And what is the purpose? You know, a lot of times there are people like me who wish, when I look at politicians who do the things that you've done, God, I wish that contraception could be retroactive. You have never corrected him for the things that he has said to others. You want to take and punish us for if we say something that's an ad hominem attack, but you didn't, haven't done it with him. And you need to do it publicly or you will continue to get this type of reaction.
Elizabeth Hall. If you all could come up here, then I can have eye contact, you know? But otherwise, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk over everybody, but I'll go with the names again. Hang on. Ann Rose and Raul Rodriguez and Shirley Ricard.
Can this be put up?
No. What do you mean, put up?
So that everybody can see it.
Your phone will show, but that's it.
Okay, well, the picture on it?
I don't know. I mean, you can leave it there, but, I mean, I don't, the camera has to zoom in on it.
Where is the camera?
You can go ahead and get started.
Where's the camera person?
It's, it's coming up. Okay, there you go. Okay, okay. There we go. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Grijhavah, in board, my name is Elizabeth Mall. Last Saturday, May 13th, I attended a presentation done by Tucson business owners and representatives from the Tucson Police Union. The presenters were individuals who started the Tucson Crime Free Coalition. They have three main focus areas. The first one, the effect of substance abuse on an individual. The second one, the effect of substance abuse on businesses in the community. And the third one, the effect elected officials have on substance abuse in the community. Briefly looking at substance abuse of the individual, here are three tactics that they've found that help. The first tactic is putting up signs on the median, saying, say no to panhandling, yes to helping agencies serve those in needs. We know these individuals need treatment and giving them two or $3 as we stop in the car, they just use it for a fix. Instead, give the money to Gospel Rescue Mission. They won't let abusers use drugs and they teach life skills. But we do need more signs. Also, it keeps panhandlers off the medians. Second tactic, using what police call, arrest our way out of this problem. Police officers said that before COVID, drug users would come to them and say, hey, remember me? You arrested me and I spent over 90 days in jail. I got sobered up, I got some treatment, and I got a job. Now I can see my family again. But after COVID, police say they're arresting users who may have at least eight to 10 offenses and before the police can finish their paperwork, the drug user is back on the street catching the nearest bus. Worse yet, some abusers are held for three days, just long enough to be thoroughly agitated, coming down off their high, and when released, will go out and do violent crimes to get a fix. I know the city is in charge of change, but I hope you will use the full extent of your influence and authority to address, arrest our way out of this problem. The third tactic, which obviously would be the best, would be to stop the fentanyl from coming across the border. Kids can order fentanyl online, they're freebasing, or what they call chasing the dragon. They are using the foil to hold the pills, using the lighter under the tin foil to melt the fentanyl, and then inhaling it with a straw. Then they throw out their foil. But if they can't find fentanyl, they'll grab that foil back and start scratching on it to try and get some of the fentanyl off of it. Now imagine if a young child like that picks up the aluminum foil, what happens? It could be deadly. I only have four seconds, so I'm going to finish this. I had more I wanted to say, but the coalition stated that Sharon Bronson, Steve Christie, understand the problem and that Steve Holmes is actually trying to establish something to work.
Ann Rose.
Thank you. It is awesome to have a member of the Green Beret present. Thank you. God bless the beasts and the children and women who menstruate. Women, women who menstruate. Oh gosh, where to begin? I wanted to start by finishing about that mask study that was published in the Journal of Public Health. My time ran out, so I'm gonna, and Dr. Hines isn't here. If I say anything that is a clinical term and you don't understand it, you can ask him. This is really more bad news regarding masks. The study was critical and now it ran about two months ago in the public health, journal called Public Health, titled Physio Metabolic and Clinical Consequences of Wearing Face Masks: Systemic Review with Meta-Analysis and Comprehensive Evaluation. So again, the researchers didn't check whether the organism or bioweapon got through the mask, but what the effect was clinically on mask wearers. So they had decreased blood oxygen, increased blood CO2, increased heart rates, higher blood pressure, more difficulty breathing, higher skin temperatures, higher reports of headaches, acne, skin irritations, feeling overheated, voice disorders, and dizziness. And worse, the researchers found that even a short-term mask wearing could cause long-term medical problems and they coined the term Mask-Induced Exhaustion Syndrome, M-I-E-S. And they even attributed that some long COVID cases are really long mask cases. So if they're right, and even some long COVID is really M-I-E-S, Mask-Induced Exhaustion Syndrome, it's another massive fail by the public health establishment and can be added to the list, a lot of injured people who otherwise would have been fine. So about that bioweapon, what is that stuff, what is COVID? What is COVID? I have 38 seconds. COVID injections are known toxic agents, causing unwarranted disease, disabilities, and death in adults and children. And by promoting these injections as safe and effective or enabling access to them, the county board and county law enforcement are at risk for civil and criminal liability. A toxin device or biological agent that has no clinical benefit and is proven to cause injury, harm, and disease, disabilities, and even death is a weapon, a weapon. So watch out about, watch out what the Department of Health here in Pima County and the Board of Health advise you to do.
Raul Rodriguez. You can just give it to the staff, not, not him, but there's, there's clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Raul Rodriguez and I'm a volunteer with For Tucson. For Tucson is a nonpartisan faith-based organization that is involved in many community outreach programs, one of which being voter registration. We've been trying to expand our outreach and one of the programs that interested us was the Tucson Naturalization Ceremonies. To begin the process of participating in the event, I contacted the Deacon'sini Courthouse, where the ceremonies take place. I spoke with Betsy Tate. She explained to me that the Pima County Recorder's Office provided the volunteers for the ceremony and that I would need to speak with them about volunteering. Betsy put me in touch with Marion Choupon, the program coordinator with the Pima County Recorder. I reached out to Marion on multiple occasions over a span of a week and a half to no avail. On May 1st at 5:50 PM, I received a call from Gabriela Cazares Kelly. She apologized for not returning her calls and asked how she could help. I explained to her that I'm a volunteer with For Tucson and that we're interested in participating in the naturalization ceremonies. Gabriela explained that they use the League of Women Voters and that if I wanted to volunteer to work with the naturalization ceremonies, that I should join the League of Women Voters and volunteer from there. She went on to explain that the Pima County Recorder's Office has always used the League of Women Voters and that the practice has been in place prior to her taking the position. She explained that it's convenient to use the league because they know the schedule and routine. I explained to Gabriela that the practice of using one organization over another, when all things being equal amongst the two organizations, is preferential treatment. Her response to this was concerning and has been her response to my several attempts at explaining the Board of Supervisors Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policies regarding preferential treatment. She responded that the Recorder's Office is not showing preferential treatment to the League of Women Voters because they're a nonpartisan organization, which of course makes no sense. I provided you with the complete email string of correspondence that I had get with Gabriela, as well as the copies of the Board of Supervisors Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policies that I gave Gabriela. If you look at the email correspondence, you'll, you'll see that I also provided a simple solution for Gabriela. Give one day of the League of Women Voters and one day to For Tucson. That's a fair compromise. As you can see in her email response, she rejected the solution. I'm asking that this issue be placed as an agenda item on the next agenda for resolution. Thank you.
Shirley Ricard. And followed by Betty Thompson. Okay, well, we're, okay, just to be clear, we're ending. Call to the audience, we're taking a pause at 10:30. We have a timed certain item at 10:30 and 11:00, and then we'll come back. So I just want to let you know. That's, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, did you want to speak or wait? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
It was quite eye-opening to me, looking at the number of residents that there are in Maricopa County and the number of residents allegedly in Pima County, to understand that their costs per citizen are $111.54. Through quite complicated math, I divided our budget by the number of our citizens. $1,200 per person, by the way. The people demand an explanation and exact accounting. We're very special compared to Maricopa, but I doubt it comes close to $1,100 per person more. Wouldn't you agree? That number seems totally out of the realm of comprehension, comprehension to me. And I have an IQ of 164. Thank you very much. And just so you don't think that I'm going to let this drop, Hines, it matters not to me in the slightest that you're on my top three list of the most despicable creeps I've ever met. What does matter, however, is the progress that Jan Brewer has made in investigating Hines's tryst on the Great Blue Seas with that person and whether he was privy to the board's executive session business. Have you done anything about that, Jan? Have you looked into it at all as the head of Human Resources? Just a question. The last thing I want to talk about is my friend Eli Elarcon. He's a Nicaraguan national. He's lived here for 18 years. He's a very comprehensive and competent contractor. He has lived with, over the last 18 years, a woman who he met in a parking lot, living in a vehicle with two twins. They were three and a half years old at the time. They never married and she unfortunately died from melanoma a year ago, November. He's raising now her two children. They're twins that are 17 years old, a boy and a girl, Isaiah and Malaya Gómez. And they're also living with her aged mother who has multiple sclerosis and has a broken arm. She's in incredibly poor health. Just to let you know what all of this budget issue has done to that poor family, he's trying to raise these children and help their mother, help their, their would-be mother above and their grandmother. And these children who get $700 per month, for each one of them from Social Security, have just had their food stamps totally cut. have just had their food stamps totally cut four months ago because of the illegals. That's what your job has done. Congratulations. I hope you can rest easily.
Thank you, Betty Thompson.
I live in District 4 and I am privileged to serve on the Executive Board of LD19. I didn't want to say anything today and I sat there getting angrier and angrier, so I thought I'd better vet a little bit. I don't believe that guns kill. I believe people kill and there will always be people who are willing to go against the law, to do bad things. Our school systems support this and encourage it, and our society has changed. I've watched it change. I've lived all over the world. I've lived in India, Colombia, Spain, Germany, and the United States. I've lived in Marxist socialist countries. And all that I've seen at this Board of Supervisors tells me that my tax dollars are being used to support your pet project, ruining Tucson and bringing it into a third world country of lawlessness and filth. America was a good place to live. I lived through the civil rights down in Alabama. At the time, I was a young girl and it terrified me. But I've seen the country change and there was no prejudice before the current administrations, the last three administrations came in, that there wasn't prejudice. Today, it's the most prejudiced I've ever seen this country and it's scary. Two weeks ago, I had illegals coming up through my, the wash behind my house, 20 feet from my back door with flashlights. I'm scared. I don't like it. And I feel totally helpless because you continue to spend my tax dollars and raise my taxes for stupid stuff when you could be supporting law enforcement, border patrol, and protecting us. You've taken millions of dollars from roads, you've put them into supporting the illegals. My father was an immigrant that came here legally. He never took a dime from the government. I don't hate the illegals, I just hate the way they're coming here and what you're doing to support that.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take a, ma'am, I, thank, thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you. So I have, we're gonna go ahead and go to the item number 20, which is time certain at 10:30. Did we want to take a quick two-minute break or do we want to keep going? Nope. Okay. All right. So we have, we're moving on to item 20, which is an update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety. County Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much, Chair Giri Halva, and that will be presented today by Deputy County Administrator.
Did we want to go ahead and take a quick pause to let people leave that would like to? We'll go ahead and do that and give you like two minutes. Great. Okay, we'll do a five-minute break. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Let's, let's, let's take it by ear. I'll take that, I'll take the phone. Okay. Test, test.
We're going to go ahead and get started. We're on, if everyone can take their seats, please. Thank you. We're on item 20, update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety. County Administrator Leshar.
Thank you very much, Chair Gerehalva. And that item will be presented in the update by Deputy County Administrator Holmes today. Thank you.
Chair Gerehalva, members of the Board of Supervisors. Just a quick update to begin with the signs. You saw a little bit of that particular initiative that was started probably about a month ago to put signs in the medians of the unincorporated areas of Pima County. That project is set to be complete on May 19th. Board of Supervisors, there's still confusion on where those signs are being placed. It's all in the unincorporated areas. I know there's a confusion on the city areas. We do not have jurisdiction of any signs being placed in the medians of the city, City of Tucson. If there are any unincorporated areas that are in your areas that have been missed after June, after May 19th, please let me know. We'll continue to kind of look at that. But we did target specifically those areas that Board of Supervisors approved, well, 2016, for purposes of trespassing in the median. So those were the areas that were targeted for purposes of completion for May 19th. So that's where that project should be completing. Again, if there's any other areas, please let us know if they're unincorporate areas and we can target those if they become an issue as well. As far as the modular is concerned, we are set still by kind of that second week in June, provided that we've complete the permitting process. The modular is actually there. The purpose of the, it's sitting there right outside of pretrial. Again, the purpose of the modular, and we're referring to now as a Pima County Transition Center, is the first iteration of beginning to intercept folks who are leaving the jail complex to comply with some of their conditions of release and get them the services they need more in real time. What we have found in discussions with police department and people who are working in law enforcement is that many times when people are leaving and exiting the jail system, there are conditions that must be completed for them, but by the time they get to court or, quite frankly, the court date is established, there's a lot of time that passes between now then and their court date. So some of the services like mental health services, drug services, housing, some issues of mental health that are essential to be obligated to be part of their conditions are not being met, right? And what happens is we have a vicious cycle of recidivism and most importantly, failure to appear in court. To begin to address this, this is just one, one potential strategy that is being used. The intention of this is to grow these particular Transition Center into the Mission Annex. What it was provided to you in a memo previously was just some models that are being used across the United States as a one-stop place for dealing with, quite frankly, people who are part of incarceration system, right? And we looked at models that are addressed there. I actually was in contact with Bear County on San Antonio, who has kind of a one-stop shop there. Please note that some of the Texas rules are a little bit different, so there's a little bit more time when people are arrested to set up all the services that are needed to comply. But the vision still long-term is to make better use of that Mission Complex facility, but beginning with this modular, which is the first iteration of the Transition Center. Eventually growing that particular location to have some detox services and creating what we're kind of referring to as this kind of custodial light facility. There are still, I think, places that people need to be for a longer period of time, getting the services they need. And if they're being released quickly, they're not complying with that and we're seeing that level of recidivism. So this is our first attempt to begin to address that issue. This is not the accountability mechanism that's part of the jail system. This is merely the support wraparound service system that we know is an essential component that we're here and will help hopefully make some, an impact in that space. We intend to provide some metrics and data to the Board of Supervisors on a routine basis, maybe doing some quarterly reports in terms of how that impacting particularly the misdemeanor portion of arrest, which tend to kind of just be let go and their head, that's where we see a big vicious cycle. I think some of the data that I initially pulled up was that 25% of misdemeanor arrests, folks that are released under misdemeanor are rearrested within 30 days, right? And so that needs to stop. We need to find ways in which we can provide systems that are going to actually address some of those issues. And that's, that's the target population, at least for the initial version of this modular, with the intent, again, of growing it into the Mission Complex and then providing more resources to support the work in that larger facility and that larger space. But we're targeted for mid-June. We will continue to keep you updated. We are hiring four personnel in the county, which we call Justice Navigators, who will be visiting the pit routinely, talking to people, making sure as people are being released, they're being sent through that modular for conversations and for support. And equally important is we're also working with the city to actually provide two additional navigators that they would fund. Most of the jail population that's circulating there are part of our City of Tucson, and so to have them kind of also contribute with, with two navigators would actually be beneficial for expanding hours and services there at the initial Pima County Transition Center. So I provided just some context, some follow-up in the last memo, but I'm open for some questions for our board.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I want to be clear, on another occasion during the County Administrator's report, I asked the County Administrator some questions and I was told by legal counsel that I could not answer or ask questions. Am I allowed to ask questions?
You can ask questions about this item, of course.
Okay, thank you. To make it perfectly clear and on the record, what is the law in Pima County and what is the law in the City of Tucson about panhandling in intersections and on medians? What is the law and what does it state?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, there is not a panhandling ordinance here in Pima, I'll speak to Pima County. So we do not have a law of panhandling ordinance. What our Board of Supervisors passed in 2016 was a law specifically for congregating in the medians, right? So it was kind of this quasi trespassing ordinance that was created by our Board of Supervisors back then, which allowed us to put signs there back in 2016 that would prohibit people from loitering in that median area. So it's not a panhandling ordinance specifically, it's a trespassing ordinance specifically in the medium that we're, that's the ordinance that's being cited on those signs specifically as we put those up.
Madam Chair, Mr. Holmes, what is the, the activity by law enforcement to enforce that?
So Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, that is a sheriff's activity. That is something I can refer back to our sheriff to, to answer that question for you more specifically. There is, there is an enforcement mechanism in play from the ordinance. How they're enforcing it is a question that I can come back to you from, with a conversation with our sheriff.
Administrator Leshar.
Just if I may, Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, I'm keeping track now. You had the question about panhandling in Tucson and now this. If there are questions specifically for Sheriff Nanos or for the City of Tucson, we'll track them for you and make sure we get a response back to the board.
And if you could add to that, Madam Chair, if you could add to that list of questions, the other, the final question I have is, under that ordinance, if people are standing, does it have to be more than one person or a person or you says congregate people? What are the requirements if somebody is in, in a median, standing there? Don't necessarily have to be panhandling, but we know that they are. Is there a specific amount of people that before that ordinance kicks in?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, we'll add that to our question with, with our sheriff to make sure we get an exact number for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions related to this item? I do appreciate the aerial photo of the facility because I think it's always visually helpful to understand where services are going to be co-located. And can you talk a little bit, on the memo, there were a couple of national models and strategies and I appreciate that because I know that in working, you know, nonprofits and all these best practices, you know, you don't have to recreate the wheel. We have a lot of other programs nationally that are doing some good work. But is the thought here to go through and just kind of pick out pieces of it that you think will have a better fit here in Pima County? And so for one, we have Tap In Center and that's in St. Louis, Support Team Assisted Response, STAR Team in Denver. There's just a couple of really good examples here, programs that are working well.
So Chair Gerehalva, I think what we need to do is make, ensure that we're looking at what is actually making a difference in crime in these particular areas. There are service areas that are located in these samples that I shared with you all in the memo. We're very interested in some of the models that are specifically in Texas right now. There are a little bit of just differences in the way the state handles arrests. There's a 48-hour kind of window before determination needs to be made, which where it's 24 hours here in Arizona. So there's a little bit of differences in the timeline. But I think what we found in those models, just as we look at kind of Southwest and kind of regional approach, seems to kind of be a little bit more aligned to kind of some of the vision that we have. More specifically, some of those have, models have our public defender and prosecution there in the room kind of 24/7, right? Along with providers in a more kind of seamless design, right? That's going to require both resources and kind of commitments from our other jurisdictions, specifically our judges and our, our city magistrate to run the initial appearances from the city, right? And so it's a coordinated effort. That's why this is the beginning to, begin to create a proof point specifically, but we're looking, if we're looking at those, those models particularly in Texas, there's a model there in Dade County in Florida that we're also interested in as well to take a look at. I think there's been, those are the ones where we've seen actually some impact and success, particularly as they're creating incentives within services in real time and mitigating the space and time between when people are both arraigned or giving their hearing and the time by which they're released, right? And so that seems to be the more functional models that we've seen across the United States.
And I know that the 24-hour releases have been problematic. Has there been any movement on that with our city partners?
So Chair Gerehalva, the 24-hour release is problematic. So part of what we're hoping is through the initial appearance, there's the IGA, there's a little bit more substance that comes along with that. I know there's multiple discussions on, on electronic monitoring, there's discussions on what that release kind of actually looks like. I think there's discussion about the times when people are being released. That's a big concern as well. This 7:00 PM initial hearing in the afternoon does not provide a lot of space and time for people who get the services they need and they're being released late at night and that's not good for our community either.
I mean, and I think it's really problematic to have these services, not problematic, but difficult right now for a lot of our nonprofit partners to have a 24/7 sort of operation. And so if there's any way for us to be able to work with our city partners to make sure that when people are released that their service is available right then, that would make the most sense. Any other questions?
Chair Gerehalva.
Supervisor Scott.
The memorandum attached to this item and some of the discussion has made reference to the working groups that were formed by Superior Court with regard to the intergovernmental agreement between the court, the county, the city dealing with initial appearances. Can the board get a date certain as to when those working groups are going to have a presentation for us and for Maron Counsel? Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bronson.
I was just going to concur with you on the 24-hour. It's not the best model.
No, and I, when Sheriff Nanos took us on the tour of the jail, what I noticed and what he pointed out is that there were three pods at that time that had people who were dealing with substance abuse issues. And so that's not, you know, we all know that that's not the best place for people to detox. And so I'm glad to hear that you're also thinking about the long-term solutions for people who need that kind of support. That shouldn't, I mean, ideally not be happening in our jails. Okay, any other questions? All right, since we're only a few minutes shy, if it's okay with everyone, we'll just go ahead and go to the 11:00 AM time certain, the updating on ending Title 42 in Pima County, since we'd probably only be able to take three callers before, or three speakers before we had to stop. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Administrator Leshar for item seven on the addendum.
Thank you, Chair Gerehalva and members of the board. This was on to provide a bit of an update on where we are and what's been occurring. I do want to speak to some of the issues that you've heard today regarding Title 8 and Title 42. U.S. Code Title 8 is the Aliens and Nationality section of the U.S. Code, and it does deal with all of the various laws that relate to immigration. Some are legal asylum seekers, some when people are crossing the border illegally. But it delineates the process by which people can legally seek asylum in the United States. Title 42, it's been noted by members of the public today, is the Public Health and Welfare section of the U.S. Code and that that was invoked in March of 2020, I believe, to stop any crossing of the border at any time because of the public health concerns related to the introduction of communicable disease into the United States. So the legal asylum seeker process with which this county has been involved ceased at that time. On May 11th, it, that the, we lifted Title 42, which means that any of the public health aspects or any of the stopping of the process for the legal asylum seekers ended and we're back only managed by Title 8. Lots of times for broad discussion regarding the comprehensive immigration reform, but what we've been focused on right now is what we do in this community to keep the community safe in that what has been occurring is that when people come across the border and indicate that they wish to seek asylum, Customs and Border Protection pick those individuals up and then they bring them into Tucson and drop them in what's called street release. If, if we did not have facilities in the community, they would be released at the Greyhound Station and our concerns have been that we can avoid that issue. I will tell you that we have avoided street release every day. That was challenged on May 11th. I think the, we lifted the pandemic requirements and there was, it was, there was great entry into the United States at that time. There was also at the time, the federal government had enacted an expedited processing element, which meant that everyone coming in could be processed in 15 minutes. And what that did was cause lots of people to become engaged. Some of you have been participating in a couple of calls we have every day to keep the community, to keep the elected and appointed officials, our delegation and others involved in what's actually happening. And we were looking at about 1,600 on the first day. We have been, the shelters that are partners with this, both here and in Phoenix, have been seeing about 1,400 plus in the shelters every day. We are working with county and city managed hotels, facilities that we have at Drexel and Aho. We've got about nine buses each day providing transportation. We're adding some staffing. The Red Cross is here. They'll be here as long as they can until probably June 1st when tornado, when hurricane season begins. We have been on, we were planning calls yesterday with the Governor's Office on additional funding, all of that. And as you know, we are at this point received about $29 million from the federal government to assist with this. As we've noted, the piece of the, of the process by which legal asylum seekers enter the United States is a continuum of which they've, because of being dropped in our community, Pima County has a slice of that effort for which we manage in order to ensure that there's not street release. And therefore we rely on the federal funding to make that possible. As folks here on the call know, one of the things that we've been striving for is to ensure, I'll just tell you, we've had a situation in the past, the very near past, where buses were coming from the Department of Emergency Management in Phoenix, driving to Douglas or Nogales, Naco, picking individuals up, bringing them, dropping them in Tucson and driving empty buses back to Phoenix. We have been working with both the state, the Maricopa County, Phoenix and other communities in that area and believe we now have a system by which if people are picked up at Douglas, Naco, excuse me, Nogales, they will be transported back into the Phoenix area for sheltering. So at this point, we hope to transition into a mode in which we are only getting those individuals that the Tucson Sector of the Border Patrol drops in our community. That is a very quick overview of where we are at this point and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Chair Gerehalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Ms. Leshar, you made reference to the May 12 injunction, federal injunction that halted expedited processing. Do we have any idea of when that injunction may be lifted?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Scott, there is a hearing, I believe Friday, on that injunction. The last I was hearing, maybe two to three weeks, but we have no, I have no way of predicting what that court might do, but there is a hearing on Friday and we'll let you know, or we'll let the board know as soon as we get any information coming out of that hearing.
Go ahead, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you, Chair Gerehalva. Mr. Clark, in his Southwest Border Report that the board received yesterday, said that there are some steps to ensure sufficient shelter capacity other than Casa Elitis after the injunction is lifted. Do we have any idea from either the state or other counties where those additional shelters are likely to be stood up?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Scott, as I just mentioned, I don't know the specifics, but the state, Maricopa County and communities in the Phoenix area, I know that our partner of the city has been working with other cities and has had positive communication with, I believe Mesa, as well as Phoenix, and we think that there will be some hotels there. At this point, there are two humanitarian partners in the Phoenix area, IRC and the International Arrest, IRC, which I'll find out in a moment what that stands for, and the All Our Helping Hands, another church-based group in the Maricopa County area. They've been taking about 200 to 250 individuals every day.
Mr. Clark also, in his report yesterday, said, and I'm quoting, with regard to his interactions with Customs and Border Patrol, repeated requests for a liaison and specific release information critical to understanding the full impact went unanswered. Do we know if Border Patrol has worked to rectify this situation so that we can get more of the specific release information that Mr. Clark is saying that the county has requested?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Scott, yes, we met Monday before, we knew, the Monday before May 11th with Chief Maudlin, our Tucson Region Director and others from his staff to make sure that we were beginning to set up the, any kind of communication channel we needed. What CBP in this community tends to do is let us know when they think buses will be coming. I think it's fair to say that the, as we, everything was looking good until May 11th hit and then by the 12th, we were, we not only had the expedited processes, but we had, I think, increased, an increase of individuals who had been unable to cross since 2020, who may be looking forward to come across at this point. I think everyone was a little bit underwater. We continued, we have had good relationships with the Border Protection, CBP, since 2020, 2019, when we began working with this because I think their hope is to avoid street release as well. They legally cannot keep the individuals in custody. They must be released and which is why we're looking at the street release here.
One last question is, Mr. Clark, in his report also said that county departments are occasionally, he said coordinated county staff sometimes help as needed. Can you tell us which county departments are contributing staff as needed?
Chair Gerehalva and Supervisor Scott, let me first of all say, the staff that's really been leaning in on the weekends when we are desperate to avoid street releases, the City of Tucson, Lane Mandell and Savannah, another, forgive me, names are escaping me today, who have been onsite at hotels throughout the weekends, processing individuals coming in, making the arrangements to move amongst them between the hotels that work. In Pima County, if you recall, when, we started this in 2019 and we did have some county staff working on this, and it started, they were working during the beginning of the pandemic when some people were going to be furloughed. So we have had some individuals from the Library Department, Community Workforce Development and Health Department are some, are the three departments from whom we get most of the individuals who are assisting. Again, in the early days, any, every individual coming in and at one of our facilities or then being released to travel to get on a plane went through COVID testing. So we did have the Health Department involved. We monitor every staff person who is allocating time to that issue so that that time is then charged back to those grants as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gerehalva.
Thank you. Question, Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, in reference again to what Supervisor Scott was saying about the report from Office of Emergency Management, it also stated that while, and I'm quoting, "While the sheltering and transportation system were overwhelmed, the communication between Border Patrol, previously successful in strategic planning communications, broke down during operations." I think that's what I want to address. And Madam Chair, with your permission, why don't we just take my addendum item and mesh it in with, with the Administrator's report?
And that was addendum item?
Number?
Four?
Five.
Four.
Four.
Yeah, item four. Yeah, and then if anyone has any questions in between all?
My, my main concern is the dissemination of information. On the first notification of the update status reports that we've been having from the Communications Department, it states here, "Please do not forward to media or agencies not, not part of the regional response. A separate channel for release of information to the media and the public is being established." My question is, why can't we forward to the media or agencies and why are they not part of the regional response? And the separate channel for release of information to the media, is it different than what we are getting? This whole process seems to be cloaked in secrecy. No one can go to the Casa Elisa, Elisa, Elitis Welcoming Center. No one has entry to it, even though our money is going to provide that shelter. We're not allowed to see what's going on in there. There have been numerous attempts by elected officials, congresspeople and all, to go in and to basically come back with some kind of an idea of the conditions and the processes and the situation, and they've been told they can't do that. And the taxpayers are paying for that. To me, that is a problem, along with the fact that all these charter flights that are leaving Tucson International Airport or Phoenix Airport to go to destinations unknown are being done at night. The buses, and I'm not sure if I'm seeing the right ones, but they all seem to be coming up from Nogales. Their windows are blacked out. And we have mention of other or different meetings at the, at the last briefing, a couple of folks said, "We'll, we'll discuss that at the 8:00 AM meeting." What are those other meetings and who's involved in them and why are they not being in conjunction with the briefing? And why are they not being in conjunction with the briefing? Why, my, an additional question is, are the press invited for any of these briefings? And if not, why not? Why is the public not allowed to be part of these meetings? Could there not be a tab on the newly designed Pima County website that could link to the public to allow them to get the information from these meetings? And if there is a different set of information being disseminated to the press, I haven't seen it, and I wonder what that dissemination is. So this whole issue is being, in my estimation, suppressed for any transparency or information to the public, and the public is the ones, public are the ones that are paying for this whole process. They have a right to know.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you Chair Gerehalva and Supervisor Christie. I made note of the tab on the website, and I, I agree about the publicly distributing information. Let me share what the different meetings are and what's occurring at this point, if I may.
Yeah, let me just add one more that you could respond to, and Supervisor Bronson brought it up at the initial meeting. A written, a summation, a written summation of that meeting was requested to be memorialized in writing, and that has not occurred. So thank you for letting me.
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, I'm sorry, from which meeting?
The first one.
The first day of the 11:00 AM meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and we will, and I'll explain the 11 o'clock meeting. What is occurring right now, first of all, is there is an 8:00 AM meeting that is run by DEMA, and our emergency management team, folks from the Red Cross. It is the operational component. It's where we get the, exactly how many people, it's the operational component. How many buses do we need? Where do they need to go? When? What needs to happen? There are, I be, you know, there are several dozen people on that call. If they're, what we then do is, and I'll be perfectly candid, when we started the first days, the people who are trying to run the operation, our Director of Emergency Management and such, were getting so many calls from representatives of elected officials and the senator and the legislature, that he was being taken away from being able to run the operations of the day-to-day mission, and was dealing with the press in that way. We then bifurcated it and said, we'll take all the notes at what's now actually a 9:00 AM meeting, and then present those to the public, if you will, at the 11:00 AM meeting. There are, I'm going to say it, just shy of, I think there's about 70 to 75 individuals on that briefing call. It includes representatives from all of the Arizona delegation to Congress, both senators, our representatives in this community. It includes representatives of, members of the Board of Supervisors, with keeping in ever remembrance about the open meeting law concerns. It has representatives from both the staff and the Board of Supervisors for Cochise, Yuma, Santa Cruz Counties, and it does have media on those calls. They participate in hearing those updates.
Could you give us an example of the media, Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
I think, I did the, I did the call on Sunday, and I remember at the beginning of the meeting, speaking with Craig Rec, I'm going to say Channel 9, forgive me, but I believe there were people on it with whom we were just chatting before the meeting started. I'm happy to go back and get the list of who all is invited to that and who participates, and share that with the board and all. And I'm happy to figure out if there's a convenient way for us to provide all that information on the website or in some absolutely publicly available way, because it's not been an attempt to withhold information. The attempt has been to allow the guys doing the nitty-gritty, running the numbers, to have an ability to do that without some of the, with press calls coming in, so they can get through that meeting. So I say, we summarize and provide the information. We'll do that, and forgive me for not being aware of the request to move on, to share that 11 o'clock meeting from the very first day, but we will certainly get that up and post it. You had another?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Two things. One, who is leading this briefing? Is it the Communications Department? Is it the County Administrator Administration? Is it the Chair of the Board of Supervisors? Who is the, the entity, what is the entity that is responsible for this? And secondly, can you give us solid assurances that from this point forward, that there will be complete transparency and dissemination of information that the public has complete access to, so they can watch this process along with everybody else?
Let me start back a moment, and let me also, forgive me, but the one I did not answer from your earlier questions is individuals being turned away that wanted to visit it. I know, I've been seeing open source media that had representatives of our congressional delegation. I believe Congressman Siskomani was there, members of our board have been there. We have had individuals who have been on tours and going on tours, if members of the board. I think part of the concern, and if there's been any limitations with media, it's for the privacy of the individuals within the facility. But learning more about how it's operating, how they're doing things, how it runs through, we have had individuals from the board been through, we're happy to accommodate if there are others who for some reason have been turned away. The eight, the nine o'clock meeting, I'm sorry, what was the eight o'clock got moved to nine o'clock, so I'm using those interchangeably. It is run by our Director of Emergency Management, Shane Clark, and it is, it is populated mostly of the people who are emergency providers and who are working, as I say, on the logistics for those operations. The 11 o'clock meeting is sort of co-hosted, if you will, by our Director of Communications, Mark Evans, and Andy Squires, who runs the communications point for the city of Tucson. And then, and I, again, I, my hope had been through a variety of publications that we had transparency to the public. It clearly, it's not felt that way. We will correct that and make sure that, that whatever we are sharing is open and available.
Madam Chair. Supervisor Bronson and Supervisor Heinz.
I expressed concern earlier, and I'm hearing it from some of the constituents in District 3, that the Border Patrol, ICE, and Customs are not communicating very effectively. Now, I realize that that is a federal issue, but I'm wondering if Shane Clark could follow up to see how those three agencies interact and how we get information that we can?
Thank you, and if I may, Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Bronson, yes, there's some of your familiar Department of Homeland Security, it's 250,000 people with a lot of components who do not necessarily communicate well. If I may, the one tweak, rather than speaking with, with Director Clark, we have been attempting to impact that situation by dealing with our federal delegation, who have either sit on or are part of committees related to oversight of homeland security.
Thank you. Supervisor Heinz.
Oh, thank you so much. I think it's important for everyone to remember that our county administrator ran the Department of Homeland Security for four years. So we have right here, right up here, someone who knows more of the ins and outs about this department, how they communicate, how they don't communicate, all that kind of stuff. So I think we are incredibly well-served to have her leadership on this issue firstly. Second, I was there on Tuesday, like last Tuesday. It's very easy to go there. You'd simply drive, drive. And I was allowed in. I was there with the governor in this particular situation, and I toured the facility, I spoke and was welcomed by Catholic Community Services and county staff members. I understand Congressman Juan Siskomani was there on Friday. Bud Foster from KOLD was physically there inside the facility, a member, of course, of the media, on Friday with Juan Siskomani, I believe. And there's no, there are no secrets here. Like, there is some limitation. You can't just have like, if I get interrupted again, I would like whoever interrupted me to please be removed by the deputies, if the chair agrees.
Okay. Go ahead, and everyone just, please let it be respectful. Go ahead Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. So there's, nothing is being hidden here. The governor and I, my chief of staff, others actually, members of other counties aboard, my colleague's staff were there too. We were interacting with a lot of the folks that were temporarily there, the guests, who came within feet of Governor Hobbs, who was not cowering in fear from these people because they're just trying to get in and out. This is a problem that is unfortunately ongoing. This was a problem during Bush and Clinton, and Bush and Trump, and all these other administrations. This is not unique to, unfortunately, to Pima County, and is not unique to President Biden, or to President Trump, or to, or to any of the presidents. The Congress and previous executives have not solved this problem, and it falls to the county. Simply, our job is to make sure that we are safely helping these folks transit to where they're going. 99.9% have an identified sponsor. These are not folks that are climbing over the wall. This is legal asylum. They've knocked on the door and asked for help. And in 85 to 90% of the cases, administrative judges do not determine that there is a credible reason for that asylum, and eventually, a lot of these folks do have to go back to their country of origin. I don't think a lot of people understand that, but there's a process. It's a legal process. These people are not here illegally. They are temporarily here legally, and we have to respect that because that's the federal law. But you're right, the communication has not been great within, even inside of CBP and others. But they aren't just dropping off random people. These folks have all had the multi-tier criminal background check conducted by CBP. And so this is not to say that, that everything is 100%, but the, the point is, this is not something that is being done just randomly and haphazardly and in a dangerous way. So there are a lot of different people at various levels trying to make sure that this works well, and that people spend their one or two or three days here, figure out where they need to go, get to the bus station, get to the airport. Some arrive with those tickets already ready to go. So I saw a, a lot of really dedicated people working their butts off to make this problem, not of our own creation, get better, and to help these folks. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, reset this and provide a bit of a context, because I'm not, I'm not telling you what I saw on TV, I'm telling you what I saw with my eyes at this facility. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, just a few, a few quick questions about the process. First of all, I keep hearing that this is not our problem, this is a federal problem. But once we started taking the money from the federal government, it became our problem. And when we started drinking from the federal cup, we became poisoned, and so it is our problem. And the only way to stop this problem is to cut off the funding now and tell the federal government, we're out of the asylum-seeking business. So going back to the actual process of the dissemination of information, we also noticed that the, the taped issues of the hearing have a very short shelf life. They're down within hours. They should be there, obviously, much longer than that, if not indefinitely. Is the Tucson Community Center being utilized in the asylum-seeking process?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, it is not.
It is not. And during one of the briefings, the gentleman, Mr. Squire from the city of Tucson, said that they had engaged the GLA Hotel Motel down, the Grand Lux, I think it is, or something like that, and that it was filled with asylum seekers, and then they were forced to move it because of a quote-unquote "safety issue." What is the safety issue?
Administrator Lesher, and that's a city facility, correct?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, let me get you that answer.
And one other thing that was brought up in that briefing was that there are, or were, the last day or so, 184 migrants in isolation at the Red Roof Inn for health, health risks. What were those health risks?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, there are a variety of concerns. We do not release individuals to be placed on an airplane, for example, to travel around the country if they have some sort of what we believe to be communicable disease.
Like smallpox or rubella?
Sure, I don't know that list, and I'm happy to make sure that you get that as well.
That would be helpful as far as disseminating that information as well to the public. And I don't think I quite heard or got a complete answer about how many Pima County staff members are being dedicated to the asylum process, and are the federal representatives reimbursing their, their time? And what departments have they been reassigned from in Pima County?
Chair Gerehalva, Supervisor Christie, I don't know the total number. This has been going on since 2019. It has ebbed and flowed at different times. When people were, the only time we had people somehow detailed was during the pandemic, when we had some facilities here closed. We do have individuals who have volunteered to go over, that we've had some assigned at different times. I can get you the numbers at different times, but each time that occurs, those individuals are billed to the grants and to the federal dollars paying for those individuals.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lesher.
I, I think that it's important to note that, you know, this is a federal issue, but the responsibility when people are going to be street released into our Pima County community is our responsibility. And so it is important that we provide a safe pathway, not just for the asylum seekers, but for our community at large. And I think that's why Pima County has stood out amongst the other counties respectfully in trying to provide service. And I'm glad to see that Maricopa is also going to be contributing in some way, because we were feeling that a lot of the responsibility was coming on Pima County regardless of what county people were picked up in. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to go back to call to the audience. All right, we have Susan Teraba, Paul Perici, and Matthew Levitt.
Board, staff, and audience, as I look over your agenda on your agenda, I notice that there will be, you will be working out a budget for the coming year, and in that budget is funding for the public libraries. My daughter-in-law, who's raising six of my grandsons, she will not step in a library now. Over COVID, for some reason, all the good books in the children's section, the good authors, seem to have disappeared, and they replaced them with smut. You all know what kind of books I'm talking about. I'm sure you've seen them, you've heard the titles. I didn't want to bring them, I don't want to read from them, I think they're disgusting. And this is our children. Good books were removed, smuts were put in their place in the children's section. The sexualization of our children is real. It is evil. And you are supporting this. You know what books I am referring to. You know you would not allow your young children or grandchildren to access to this material. So why are these books still in our libraries? You fund the libraries. You have a duty to the citizens of this county to stop this sexualization of our children, and that includes drag queen activity. And I want to, because they, all they want to do is perform their perversion under the, under the guise of a storytime. You know the definition of the word pervert? According to Merriam-Webster Dictionary, pervert, to cause, to turn aside or away from what is good or true or morally right, corrupt. So there's a lot of corruption going on in our libraries, a lot of corruption in our schools. Please do not just hand over these funds without some sort of stipulations to get this horrible, these horrible books out of the children's sections of our libraries. Thank you.
Paul Perici?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Paul Perici. I'm here representing for Tucson. We're your community partner. We're involved right now in poverty reduction in the anti-neighborhood, economic opportunity and development. We have task forces in education and housing, and I'm trying to get citizens involved in the governmental process. We are very concerned about legal immigration and naturalization, becoming citizens. I'm a first-generation American. One of the ways we do this, for years, we've been teaching the U.S. Constitution in Spanish to new Americans. The people that come through our classes embrace America and understand our rights, that our rights come from God and not from government. We're nonprofit, we're also totally nonpartisan. We work with everybody in the community at all levels. You heard from Raul Rodriguez about the problem that we're having trying to be involved in the naturalization. the naturalization. Thank you for your proposal. However, I'll not approve your request. An opportunity for you to volunteer already exists. If you'd like to participate, you may go through the League of Woman Voters. Well, that's great, and we respect the League of Woman Voters. But your policy says that prohibit county employees to give preferential treatment to any private organization and individual. Now, I understand that the counterrecorder does not report directly to you, but we're all under the same rules. And I'd really like to see this board put this on an agenda to look at how we get the other people involved so they follow the rules. Because we'd like to be involved, which we'll share with the league, or if there's 50 people that'd like to do this, we'll share with all of them. We just want to see that at the table so we can help register new immigrants into the United States. Thank you, appreciate you.
Matthew Levitt, followed by Lori Moore, Tina Glidden, and Juan Marquez.
I have a math.
Okay, thank you.
I come before the board today to shed light on to our atrocious transportation network across the county. The issue comes to the forefront once more as news broke on May the 10th that motorcyclist Stephen Berry succumbed to his injury sustained after hitting a large pothole at the intersection of Glenn and Columbus on April the 18th. The fact that the rider was legally riding without a helmet is erroneous, being that the pothole should not have been there in the first place. This is not an isolated issue, and it is a symptom of a much larger disease as the decaying of our critical transportation infrastructure in both the city of Tucson and Pima County as a whole. The maps provided for consumption provide insight into our dire situation. Every roadway marked in red lacks enough lanes and safety infrastructure for modern traffic flow at modern speeds. Everything marked in blue is adequate. You will notice that the maps are either exclusively or overwhelmingly red. This county does not need road diets. It is in desperate need for a road infusion. The honest truth is that the Regional Transportation Authority has failed miserably in meeting the ever-growing transportation needs of Pima County. The RTA should be dissolved by the Board of Supervisors, who should then be focused on road widening and modernization projects within their respective districts. Let's not even begin to delve into the massive conflict of interests in having one construction company, Borderland Construction, listed as a preferential contractor for all county road projects. Furthermore, we must state that the RTA is not exclusive in this well-deserved criticism. So too has Suntran, the county's only public transportation entity, failed to provide both Pima County and the city of Tucson with adequate competition for private automobile usage. We are endlessly harped upon to relinquish our car keys and utilize public transportation. Well, all right, then, where is this utopia of public transportation? Out-of-date buses running across decaying congested roadways and a streetcar to nowhere in particular are not meeting our needs as taxpaying citizens. Let me be clear, conservatives are not inherently opposed to public transit. Conservatives are against government-run bureaucracies that hemorrhage resources and provide poor services, if any at all. In this case, Suntran is taxpayer-funded by both the city of Tucson and Pima County, but only provides limited services to the city of Tucson with a few exceptions, and is run incredibly inefficiently by a French conglomerate headquartered in Paris. The ludicrousness of what I have just said should boggle all of your minds. We need interurban railroad lines, subway lines, and county-wide rapid-transit bus routes. Road diets will not work when the underlying public transportation network is grossly inadequate to begin with. We see through the charade, this is yet another effort to force all of us outliers into the nightmarish 15-minute city version of downtown Tucson dreamed up by Orwellian psychopaths. It is your job to protect your constituents from such an outcome, not to encourage it. For it is competition, never coercion, that will elicit change that will benefit all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lori Moore. I live in District 1. I am a biological female, a Christian, and a conservative constitutionalist. I identify as a Cabahoe, a Caucasian who likes Navajo jewelry. I got to play the part. My title is "It's a Start." At our previous meeting, we heard very chilling stories from women who live on the reservation. Their presentation was moving. During that meeting, the main speaker repeatedly used the phrase "it's a start." She said, "It's a start that they invited us to the board meeting, and it's a start that we were given a plaque." I read between the lines, which I interpreted as meaning, they were being given tokens from the board, which minimized a serious point that they were trying to make, and that is that the women on the reservation are being murdered or are missing. And what the reservation really needs is tangible protection now. Well, so does our country. The audience responded to this cry for help audibly with "close the border or build the wall," which meant, yeah, we both need help. We get it, we agree. Adalita, you felt that there was a need to reprimand the audience for what you mistakenly perceived as being insensitive and rude to the indigenous women. That could not have been further from the truth. You must understand that when our group of constituents enters this room, we know that we have to leave all logic and sense at the door. Walking into this room is like jumping into a cold, ice-cold swimming pool. What we see and hear at these meetings shocks the system. So when the women from the reservation shared their situation to us in the room, our logic and reasoning was on autopilot, and it came flooding back in, "close the border." For me, I thought, yeah, this is serious. I hear you. The reservation is on the front line of the invasion, but so is Arizona. The reservation needs to protect itself like the rest of our nation. It's a start. If you voted Democrat, you voted for open borders. And what did you think was going to happen? You made the mess, and you will never clean it up. The reservation can protect itself and the republic by plugging up the gateway to illegal trespassing on their land, as well as illegal entry into this country. It's a start. The country and the reservation must have secure, guarded borders. It's a start. Without a secure border, the victimhood will only continue for all of us. Sadly, the Democrat Party promotes victimhood. They are the party of racism and victimhood. This is their base. The citizens of the United States and the reservations must leave the Democratic Party and stop being victims. It's a start. Thank you.
I'll get my glasses on here. Okay, my name is Tina Glidden, and you'll be happy that my topic isn't on the border. But I am very grateful that I was led to this meeting to hear some of the comments I've heard and learn what is or is not, rather, happening in our county. I came to talk about another crisis. And I came because I'm pissed and because my heart hurts. We've got a crisis at PAC, our local animal shelter. It's our only open-admission shelter in the county. I'm wondering, when's the last time anybody here, any of you guys, toured that shelter to see the conditions that these poor dogs and the staff, the volunteers are working, and these guys are miracle workers there? As the county's only open-admission shelter, I'm wondering what you guys are doing to help support them and to help get them through this. I would like to, can you put your cameras over here? I don't know if I'm putting things in the right place. I don't know how this works. That's checkers. That's snuckers. They were killed because they were scared and afraid to walk on a leash, and they had overcrowding in the shelter and couldn't help them. They were put in a back kennel where the decompression team that works with these dogs didn't even know they were there. Now we have a decompression team that has stepped aside for the time being. Saw, too many dogs, Butterball, those are just a few. Those were living, breathing, heartbeats that were killed. Meanwhile, in Tucson, can you, I don't, can you guys see these? Okay. Meanwhile, in Tucson, you've got Animal Kingdom, Pets at Park Place. These are three, four, five, $6,000 dogs. One's a peek-a-boo. That's not even a purebred dog. These are puppy mill backyard breeding dogs that are being allowed to be sold. And look at what they're being kept in. Why? Why? Why is this allowed? Look at the little glass rooms. And from what I read, he was already closed down once. Why is he in operation? What are we doing about this? This is something, I don't know what you do to get things put on an agenda. This is something I would like to see addressed. There are two pet land stores I just read about that are going to be, going into operation or being built. I don't, I'm not sure. I couldn't find all the information, but one of them's on River Road, Tucson. I'd like to know what we're doing, what we can do, and is there a way to get this put on the agenda? Thank you.
Juan D. Tim McFadzen. And then followed by Peter Norquist, Steve Selvi, and Pendleton Spicer.
Madam Chair, if you'd give me one minute, I'd range him to get this set up real quick. The plug here is not working.
Call to the audience is for you to speak, and you can show an over.
Well, it's part of my, part of the presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow supervisors. I want to revisit the opening statement from Pima County Dr. Francisco Garcia at a U.S. Senate Committee hearing back on April 26th, which I addressed two weeks ago. If you recall, he stated in his opening statement to the committee that the 2019 Catholic Community Services asked the city of Tucson and Pima County for assistance in setting up temporary shelter for people seeking asylum, which they agreed to. I'm not a video production artist, but I have two short segments I would like to play from Real America Voice Hispanic-American reporter Ben Berklam, who has been at the U.S. border, Central and South America, in the Dangerstarian Gap in Panama for well over a year, covering the illegal immigration invasion of our country.
Sir, you can send those, if you can pause that, please. You can send those to us, but we're not going to allow playing another tape. You can read whatever you would like, but call to the audience does not inherently provide.
Okay, that takes the wind out of my sail, frankly.
I apologize. You can send it to us directly at our mail, but we're not going to play that. Thank you. And I paused your time, so I'll go ahead and let you continue.
Okay, well, I guess I can't, I guess I have to speak for Ben Berklam in the video here and share what's in there as best I can. Ben is on the border, both in Brownsville and Yuma, Arizona. He is reporting and showing video of all the illegal immigrants, but more importantly, he is pointing out to buildings, and you'll see the signage, Catholic Charities, Catholic Services. And this is the very organization that frankly Dr. Garcia referred to in the statement that he said that this has been going on for four years, and it's being funded by Pima County and Tucson. As you might very well have been seeing this invasion at our border is for real despite the mainstream media lack of coverage, and Biden mayorkas flat-out aligned the border is secure. Anybody with an objective mind and pair of eyes, and again, he's missing the whole point here, not being able to see the videos, can see it is for real. And if you notice what is right there, as an NGO helping these illegal immigrants is Catholic charities and services, the very organization Dr. Garcia referred to, as I've already stated. The board needs to stop the collapse of our public infrastructure and services now before Pima County continues to maintain Tucson as a sanctuary city by feeding, housing, transporting, and providing medical assistance to asylum seekers as well as illegal immigrants. Catholic Community Services, also known as Catholic Charities, needs to stop being funded by this board. Those funds should be directed towards social services for U.S. citizens. Thank you.
Peter Norquist.
I could send you the links.
Thank you.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Peter Norquist. Today, I'd like to speak on a few underwaking issues with a common theme. I noted with interest at the end of your last meeting, the admission of concern by some of you about the immigration crisis on the southern Arizona border. Supervisor Christie referenced an article he wrote in 2020 and said that he felt vindicated, and I agree. Many of us have been observing this situation for the past several years and wondering what, if any, rationale was driving decision-making in regard to this issue beyond merit hunger for federal money. Indeed, the growing addiction to federal money, especially in the past three years, seems to have left Pima County in the very difficult position, according to your recommended budget, of running a deficit in the coming fiscal year of over $265 million. That's an alarming figure. The point I wish to make is that many people have been warning about the immigration issue in the past few years, and that these warnings appeared to fall on deaf ears. The larger point I wish to make is that this is far from the only issue that this has happened with. The COVID shots are another example. I continue to encounter victims of the COVID shots where the cause of disease, or in some cases, death, will never be uncovered simply because nobody is looking. The principle behind the shots is that the body is tricked into producing a toxin which targets the weak points of the organism. Damage may manifest quickly, or it may take years for the cumulative effect of the shots and boosters to take its toll. Teresa Collin and Francisco Garcia have consistently advised you with the pseudoscience and false statistics pushed by Big Pharma. And despite multiple warnings over the past few years, you have continuously chosen to act on the recommendations to the detriment of your constituents. Election integrity is yet another example. I was pleased last year when Administrator Leshar asked for input on the weaknesses of the present system, rife with gaps in oversight and subject to numerous infrastructural vulnerabilities. However, after she was provided with a veritable laundry list of problems, I see no evidence that any substantial corrective action was ever taken and can't help but wonder if this was an effort to collect information preemptively so that the broken system could then be whitewashed in its entirety. Yeah, I wonder. Now the county attorney has been put on notice about the malfeasance, nonfeasance, maladministration, and misconduct by the Tucson Mayor and City Council. They have acted unlawfully and have failed to rebut the claims of the hundreds of notices and affidavits they have been served and are in violation of their oaths of office. Will you acknowledge this and support an investigation? Perhaps we can put part of the administrators' requested 103,000-plus line item toward securing legal counsel, which costs less than $10,000. We are waiting a response. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Supervisor Christie. You already took some of the words out of my mouth, and what I wanted to say to counter some of the nonsense that I heard up here a little while ago. That being that this problem at the border that we're encountering is a federal issue. We have no control here in Pima County, but all we can do is try to keep our citizens safe. That's why we're providing free housing, free transportation, on and on, which, quite honestly, stop blowing smoke up our skirts. It's not about safety. You guys are basically facilitating this process. You're greasing the gears to keep it going by taking federal money. When federal money was offered, you could have told the federal government to stick it, secure the border. No. You took the federal money, you rolled out the red carpet, and you're facilitating this. To Matt Hines's comment that this has been something that's going on for administration after administration, let me throw out a stat, and you can look it up, Matt. For the 62 years Ellis Island was in operation, there were 12 million legally-vetted immigrants that went through Ellis Island. In Joe Biden's two years, we've already gotten 15 million people, mostly illegally, coming across the border. Not vetted, just a couple of days ago, we had five people on the terrorist watch list that were encountered in the Tucson sector. So all I got to say is, you guys were elected to represent the people of Pima County. You are not travel agents for the rest of the world, and you're certainly not travel agents for people illegally breaking the laws that enter our country illegally. That's it. Thank you.
Pendleton Spicer, followed by Tara Ratliff, Stephanie Kirk, and Roger Score.
My name is Pendleton Spicer, and I have lived in Tucson since 1946. I've watched Tucson grow. I have lived in the same house that my parents bought in 1946, and we were five miles from the city of Tucson. We're now in midtown Tucson. We're now in midtown Tucson. I want to address your budget, proposed budget. I do not believe that you should have a budget that has such a monstrous deficit of 165 million plus. If I ran my household that way, I would have people on my tail constantly. So, I would like to urge you to not have a budget with a deficit. You can do that by reducing government, taking government out of people's homes, taking government out of people's lives, and allow, and do what government is set up to do, which is to protect us from being murdered or assaulted, from being robbed, or from being defrauded. That, to me, is what the government's role is, and I am not wishing to have the government in my bedroom, in my house, and in my life. And you can reduce your budget by taking, by taking these steps, and I would encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Tara Ratliff?
Good morning, or afternoon, maybe. My name is Tara Ratliff. I'm going to speak about this Board's continued enabling of illegal immigration. I have talked to numerous Border Patrol agents, both active and retired, and while this is a complex issue, the bottom line is that worldwide, everyone knew that Title 42 was ending, and so they are strategically and purposefully going to overwhelm the system, so illegals must be released into the U.S. with only a promise to appear in court. The media and elected officials are supporting these narratives of fear and emergency. Title 42 was only enacted three years ago, which made it easy to deport illegals with little paperwork and almost no prosecutions. The result? Agents seeing the same people cross into the U.S. multiple times, and there's no consequences, no prosecutions. Border Patrol will only be going back to what they have been doing for decades, so why the emergency? Because it's being done intentionally. There are multiple levels of attack occurring to further this narrative. The administration has purposefully made the work environment for Border Patrol agents toxic, and it's causing a mass exodus from within. They have also made it a lot harder for applicants to get hired. This is all strategic. With Title 42 ending, agents can start prosecuting again. The problem is that it's a lot of paperwork and very, very time-consuming. If Border Patrol is holding too many illegals, they won't be able to keep up with the paperwork and the laws and the timeframes they need to do the paperwork again, and they'll be forced to release them into the U.S. with only a promise to appear. The illegals in administration know this and are planning to overwhelm the system on purpose. So why are illegals continually coming to the U.S.? Because they are being enabled and enticed by our taxpayer dollars. Do you think that they would continue to come in droves if they weren't given free food, free shelter, free medical, transportation, both locally and paid airline tickets to other parts of the U.S.? Tucson has already voted and made it clear that we do not want to be a sanctuary city, yet this Board continues to vote in support of spending hundreds of thousands of our taxpayer dollars, enabling this mass invasion. This Board is failing to affirm and defend the will of the people. While this is a complex issue, there are solutions available. Stop funding with our money the incentives that entice illegal immigration to come to the U.S. Use our taxpayer dollars to support our local law enforcement. Vote never again to force vaccinate county employees. This has crippled our local law enforcement. And create a culture where legal immigration is more desirable and attainable. Thank you.
Stephanie Kirk?
My name is Stephanie Kirk. May I have the camera over here on this blue tape for just a second? So, I want to address the fact that people are climbing over the border, so if we could do that, as my time's running. Can you see that? It's kind of hard to see, but you can see people trying to come over the border. That's my friend Sheriff Lamb, who is on the border, doing that job that you came in with the, was it the mayor? Is that who that was, Hobbs? Beauty Pageant? Yeah, so I'm thinking that maybe you're missing a lot of the important pieces of the things that are going on at the border. With that being said, as you guys are working out the budget, the public's sitting in anticipation and wondering, what in the heck is going to get increased? Right? If you're confused or you're gaslighting anyone, we can look at the truth in taxation hearing, Rex Scott. Right? I want to go on to item six. I would like to thank Steve Christie for item six, the impact of the COVID-19 vaccines and mandates for the county employees and Pima County people in general. I mean, we're all sitting up here trying to think about, oh my goodness, how can we save the day? How can we fix the homeless? How can we be the best Americans we can be? Hold the hands of these immigrants as they come over here looking for the freedom that we have? At the same time, wondering why in the world are there so many homeless people on the streets? Well, I'm not going to lie, when I came here 20 years ago to attend the University of Arizona, I thought, what a pothole. Nothing compared to what it is now. You continue to enable. So as I look up here, I see a bunch of people that are enablers and victims, and some that are raised by somebody who says, here's my credit card. Spend it on whatever you want. As we continue to accept these funds, when does it stop? When do we stop being the nice person? Well, if we didn't offer free medical and transportation, hotel, food, warning afterpills to the little girls that are getting raped 60, 70 times? I mean, are we thinking about that? I'm so tired of this Board gaslighting the fact that I care about other people. Caring about other people doesn't mean that we have to, I don't know, throw people in some sort of facility to try to get them clean. They're not getting clean. I talk to the homeless. They're getting recharged. Your efforts aren't working. What you should have done was kept your nose out of the business of the common people and let them deal with whether they wanted to suffocate their children or not at school, or if they wanted to come and work for the county and go in and be heroic and save people and fiery houses, or help people on the front lines. We should have decided if they wanted to lower the oxygen level and make their cells acidic. We should have decided if they wanted to take an experimental injection and inject themselves with a bunch of freaking ingredients they don't even know. But remember the time when we did anthrax?
Thank you. Roger Score?
We have, then we have Ross Polo, Joanne Schlebb, Robert Royce, Jennifer Barrosso, and then David Iggy. And that's the end of our speakers.
Board, Chairwoman Grohl, I'd like to start out by congratulating you on your 20-year lifetime award. 20 years at TUSD, where 34% of the children could read. 31% could do math. That means if you had three kids, you were lucky if one of them could read and another one could write. And you achieved this in a lifetime. Look at Pima County. How much in debt are we? And now we're bringing illegals in from across the border? Rex Scott, you like to talk about firearms, but part of the lie is leaving out the facts. The fact is, although 120 people a day are killed by firearm in the USA, he leaves out that 62% are suicides. They could have used a knife, but they used a gun, and that's included in those deaths. But then why don't we mention that 150 people die per day from synthetic opioids like fentanyl? Why don't we bring that up? Let's stop that by closing that border. These people are coming here for amnesty. Why? If Mexico's such a great country that we're going to fly that rag out in this hallway, then why do they get amnesty? I want that rag taken down. The only flag I honor is that one, that state flag. If they're not part of our government, why are they flying out there? This is a takeover. If you want to go with me, I'll take you down to Naco. I was there yesterday. You know how many females out of 100 are crossing that border? One. I saw one female yesterday. I don't know, back in 1919 to 2010, down in Mexico, they must have had a lot of males born, because these are all military-aged men coming across that border. You want to know why we need firearms? Because you're bringing on an invasion of our nation. You're destroying us economically. Our roads are a disaster. You're bringing in forces to destroy our country from within, as you deplete us financially. Thank you.
Ross Polo?
Am I there? Not long ago, when I lived in the People's Republic of New York, I took an art course with young college students. We were to critique each other's assignment called "Life," represented by fire, earth, and water. One piece of art reminded me of Jack London's literary work, like "Call of the Wild," "White Fang," "To Build a Fire." So I said that to the students during my critique. To my surprise, not one student had any idea of whom I was talking about. London had been canceled by the local school board for using dangerous language. You see, a school board leaders build up the reputation of writers whom they like or find useful, and destroyed writers that they consider harmful. Take, for instance, "Let's Talk About It" by Erica M. Owen and Matthew Nolan, the book that we have seen displayed here before, and I'm displaying again. Look at that table of content. Is this, is this literature? I think not. I think not. I think this is porn for kids. By the way, London was a socialist that ran unsuccessfully for mayor of San Francisco a couple of times. He was no longer useful, so they canceled him, the Marxist did. I remember being in seventh grade, reading Ralph Waldo Emerson's Self-Reliance and thinking it was up to me to make something of myself. Yes, I had the support of my parents, as I was only 13 or 14, and I knew that I could not make life-changing decisions until I was older and self-reliant. Emerson, Emerson promoted self-reliance as an ideal, even a virtue, and contrasted it with various modes of dependency or conformity, which, by the way, conformity is often a form of betrayal, which can be carried out without, without perfectly clear conscience. So, come on now, let's stop making moratics out of our children. In an age when to love a one country is vulgar and to love God is old-fashioned, it's time, it's time for our kids to be properly educated by teaching critical thinking, for instance. Today, public schools are teaching students not to think, not to question, not to analyze. Just parrot, react.
Joanne Schlebb?
I'm asking you, please, help.
Thank you. Have a seat, sir. Thank you. Joanne? Okay. Robert Royce? Yeah, I know. I don't, I don't see Joanne here. Or no one's coming up.
The reason I like Mr. Jefferson's third paragraph is because his wise and frugal government, along with the sacred principle from my last presentation, stand as the center of my political philosophy. Let us then, with courage and confidence, pursue our own federal and republican principles, our attachment to our union and representative government. Kindly separated by nature and wide ocean from the exterminating havoc of one quarter of the globe, too high-minded to endure the degradation of the others, possessing a chosen country with room enough for our descendants to the thousandth and thousandth generation, sustaining a due sense of our equal right to the use of our own facilities, to the acquisition of our own industry, to honor and confidence from our fellow citizens, resulting not from birth, but from our actions and their sense of them. Enlightened by a benign religion professed in deed and practiced in various forms, yet all of them inculcating honesty, truth, temperance, gratitude, and the love of man, acknowledging and adoring and overwhelming providence, which by all its dispensations proves that it's delights in the happiness of man here and his greater happiness hereafter. With all of these blessings, what more is necessary for us to be a happy and a prosperous people? But one thing more, fellow citizens, a wise and frugal government, which shall restrain men from injuring one another, which shall lead them otherwise free to regulate their own affairs of industry and improvement, and shall not take from the mouth of labor the bread which it has earned. This is the sum of good government and necessary to close the circle of our felicitations. Now, I've done the entire chapter in two minutes. Let me remind people that I am in the process of recruiting Board members slash co-sponsors for a Jeffersonian Party here in Pima County, and anyone who would wish to apply for a position on the Board should come here on a Tuesday morning and talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Barrosso? She wants to speak during the hearing. David Iggy?
Thank you, Chair Grohl, members of the Board. I am an employee of Pima County, but I'm here today speaking as an individual, United States citizen, and resident of Tucson. I'm here to speak about immigration because this issue is very, very personal to me. I was born in South America, in Bogota, Colombia. I came to the United States when I was five years old. Because of the sacrifices that my mom made for me and my sister, I was able to get a good education. I was able to go to college. I was able to get a college degree with honors and move on to do meaningful work that I believe helps our community. I was not born in the United States of America, but I had a chance to come, grow up, and contribute to the United States of America. We are a nation of immigrants, always have been, always will be. And thank God, if it weren't for immigrants, America would never have benefited from the brilliance and breakthroughs of some of the most important figures in world history. Albert Einstein, Sergey Brin, co-founder of Google, Levi Strauss, Joseph Pulitzer, Liz Claiborne, Marilyn Albright, Isabel Allende, the founders of YouTube, Steve Chen and Yahweh Kareem, and many, many others. Oh, even Rupert Murdoch is an immigrant to the United States of America. Though Congress has failed to act over the past 37 years to update our broken immigration system, the fact remains, migrants from all over the world look to America as a nation of opportunity, a place where they can be safe, where they can be safe, where they can provide for their families, and where they can contribute to the continued growth and prosperity of our great country. Many of these folks seeking asylum in our country today are fleeing extreme violence and persecution because of who they are, their sex, their religion, their ethnicity, their sexuality, their political affiliation. Many are fleeing abysmal poverty, which exists in no small part, not because, not only because of failures of their own government, but also, let's be frank, because of the foreign misadventures of the United States of America over hundreds of years. So let's be real, people are coming here in search of a better life, or any life at all, and we have the capacity to welcome them. We have the capacity to welcome them with open We have the capacity to welcome them with open arms. Because it's who we are and because it makes America stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a close to the call to the audience. I'm sorry, Jennifer Barroso wanted to speak at a hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the audience and ask if any member wishes to address a criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Chair Gergalba.
Supervisor Scott.
Could I ask the county administrator, during budget presentations for the recommended budget, could you address the assertion that was made multiple times that the recommended budget is, includes a deficit?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was actually going to say the same thing. But then, on another note, could we go, before we do the budget, could we go to executive session? Because we have some people on the clock. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to put in mind a discussion item at some point in the near future regarding the issues about the county recorder not allowing for Tucson to participate in voter registration as one item. And another item, and it's coming to the forefront with my constituents more and more, I'm getting more and more communications of complete disgruntlement and disgust of the issue of the books in libraries and the appropriateness of the age level and their location and their dissemination. I think we need to hear from the Library Board District to discuss this issue. It's becoming much and much more heated, and it needs to be brought before this board. Thank you.
Okay. And I wanted to respond to a criticism that I made regarding outbursts during the missing and murdered indigenous women. The U.S.-Mexico border crosses the Tahoma Nation and the Pasquio Yaki tribal lands. Each has members on both sides of the border. Closing the border would directly continue to cut these nations apart and further divide their communities. The Tahoma, especially those on the Mexican side, are a prime example of the perception of native folks being foreigners in their own land. Discrimination and marginalization are still prevalent towards native folks who seek to protect their land. The land is theirs in name and is actually only conditionally theirs until the government decides that they're a nuisance to their interests, thereby belittling their ability to self-govern and further pushing the agenda that colonizers sought to accomplish and manifest destiny. While the Tahoma struggle to stay united on both sides of the border, their division makes it easier for the government to push whatever plans they have for the border further. Dividing a nation's citizens is just one tactic that traditionally has been used to overtake territories without much resistance. In this case, it could very well be the downfall of this tribal nation. It is true that there much more needs to be done on the epidemic of missing and murdered indigenous women, but to think that interrupting the mothers, sisters, and friends of those directly impacted at the board meeting was an intention to support their causes is obviously untrue and at best completely inappropriate. Thank you. So any other comments? Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things I heard in call to the public that this maybe doesn't have to be an item, but maybe a direction for staff. The gentleman who was bringing up, I think it was Pima Mine Road or something, she was... Oh, great. Thank you, Supervisor Bronson. And then, the animal deaths at PAC. I was really concerned about that. And I, if that might be Dr., probably Dr. Garcia, I would like to hear more about those. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So now, there's been a request from legal to go directly to executive session. So can I get a motion to go into exec?
So moved.
I'll second their motion to second a motion by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously and we'll be back in public meeting as soon as we're done in exec. So, meeting is recessed. Public meeting.
Okay, we're back in session. We addressed Executive Session Item 16 was for information only pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3 and 4 for legal advice and direction regarding the proposed settlement with Torres Blancas Golf Course. And then we do have a vote regarding this item on Item 24 is the proposed settlement with Torres Blancas Golf Course. I'll go ahead and move approval as recommended in Executive Session 2nd of a motion to second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we are on Item 6, the tentative budget presentations. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our County Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much, Chair Gidi Hava. First thing I do want to mention and just remind folks that this is the tentative budget adoption. At this point, the amount that you are, whatever, if there's an approval today of the budget, the amount that you approve is the top. It would be the cap, if you will, from this point forward should you make amendments to the budget before final adoption. They can go down. They can be less than this amount, but they just can't go up. So the reminder that today is in fact the cap. What you have before you is just about $1.76 billion budget. It's down roughly 172 million from last year. We do, part of that is, remember, as a board policy, we're moving about $16 million in new cost shifts that have been coming from the state through to voters. We do have a combined tax rate that's, would be $5.1048 per hundred dollars taxable net assessed valuation. That's just about seven tenths of a percent increase or just under four cents over the current combined rates. Two things I just wanted to point out, we do have, there have been some comments earlier about the grants. We, as you know, once we establish the budget, it cannot, that, we have a limit then at that point. We have had grants in the past, if you recall, the last couple of years, some $350,000, so we, or 350 million just for some of the pandemic-related efforts alone. We put dollars in as a potential grant capacity should we need matching dollars or capacity for any grants that might come in. But I think, and Supervisor Scott, you mentioned it, I think lots of people have had that question about what they see as a deficit budget. It is not, and that the one-line item about revenues and expenditures is one single element that addresses whether there is a balanced budget or not, or what those funds, what that balance might look like. I can say in the 13 years I've been with the county, this upside down, just looking at expenditures and revenues is, has always been that way. And we, Ellen Moulton is here and would like to address, I see that Supervisor Bronson has a question. I was going to ask Ellen Moulton to address it with more clarity.
Can we have the presentation first and then ask questions?
No, I'd like to.
Supervisor Bronson.
No, just a reminder, we are statutorily required to have, to have a balanced budget, are we not?
We are, yes, and we do. Thank you, thanks Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you.
And if I may have Finance Director Ellen Moulton explain with a little more detail that issue. Thank you.
Good afternoon Supervisors. We did present to you a balanced budget today. There are multiple items that are involved in the calculation of the balanced budget. They include not only revenues and expenditures, but also transfers, other financing sources, as well as the use of fund balance. The county, in the budget that we presented to you today for the general fund, we've included 93 million in fund balance as the general fund balance reserve per, per year policy. That is a set aside. We don't expect to spend it, but it is nonetheless included. We've also included $66 million in the use of fund balance for the general fund. Those items are delineated on Page 6 in the transmittal memo or on Page 3-6 of the Budget Book. They include a number of things such as increases in departmental expenditures, potential cost, state cost shifts for next fiscal year, we have a contingency for inflation, several other contingencies in there as well. I hope that answers the question as to whether we've presented you a balanced budget.
Thank you, and thank you. And just to note if I may, Chairman Gidi Hava, we've got people here to answer of course questions that you might have. As you, the, another option and something we would like additional direction if requested from the Board. At the request, during our conversations with all the members of the Board as we were preparing this budget, as you know, we had a very different process this year. We started much earlier for a variety of reasons, providing documents on this website, et cetera, et cetera. We had, we did eliminate the two days of hearings with the departments. The feedback that we received when we heard, from those, from whom we heard, was that, if you will, we had achieved the worst of all worlds, that we had an opportunity to take a lot of time, but not real question, there were no questions, met very few, if any, questions asked of the departments. Should the Board wish to ensure that there be a different format or any public hearings of any kind between now and final budget adoption, or any time in the next meetings, we would be happy to schedule that.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, what?
Supervisor Christie.
Is it appropriate, or when would it be appropriate, to offer suggestions of, of modification to the entire tentative budget?
Chair Gidi Hava, Supervisor Christie, from my perspective, we would welcome them now.
Okay, the C-Biz study, I'm sorry.
Just a point of order. This, these are hearings. I think we have to open the hearings, do we not?
I think just to hear feedback about the process, and then once we start talking details, I would agree, yeah, we need to open up the hearing. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The C-Biz study, employment study, the compensation study, implementing that is in this budget year. That is expected to cost approximately $14 million. I'd like to suggest that we move that into next year's budget and not implement it in this year's budget. That'll provide a savings of $14 million.
Chair Gidi Hava, may I ask for some clarification? And so the suggestion being no modification in salaries this year, moving that to next year?
Correct.
Okay, so we wouldn't change that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so seeing no other questions about the process, we'll go ahead and go to flood control. This is Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards. This is the hearing. And so Flood Control District Board, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the proposed budget for flood control? I'll go ahead then and close the public hearing. And can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing and then to approve the flood control budget, we'll need, let's see.
If I may, Chair Gidi Hava, the proposed budget for the next year for the Flood Control District is $29,933,249 and a rate of .3253. And I always look at to the back of the room to make sure I've said that.
Thank you. I'll let you take over that part. Each, every one of them. Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a motion? Do I move for approval? We close the public hearing, can I, I'll go ahead and move approval?
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? We'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson.
Yes.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gidi Hava. Yes. Item passes 5-0. Now we're moving on to the Improvement District Board, and I'll go ahead and ask our County Administrator to.
And if I may, Chair Gidi Hava, Ms. Moulton, the amounts are delineated on this page, is that correct? Thank you. So I, with permission of the Board, I will not read them all, but you have them delineated in Page 3 of your agenda today.
Okay, so we'll approve as presented. Do we have anyone here, this is a hearing, so do we have anyone here to speak in opposition of the recommended budget? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve.
Move the item as presented in Item 8 with the Improvement Districts from Hayhook to Salida Del Sol.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by, a motion by Supervisor Bronson and second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussions? I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gidi Hava? Yes, item passes 5-0. Now we're on to the Library District Board.
Chair Gidi Hava, the, what you have before you is review adoption of the Library District tentative budget of $56,672,590. Uh-oh, they're looking at each, I think that's right, at which would bring the total tax rate to .5493. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone present to speak in opposition of the Library District Board recommended budget? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
As presented, I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Last for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gidi Hava? Yes, item passes 5-0. Now we're at Rocking Cave South Community Facilities District Board, Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. If I may, Chair Gidi Hava, I'm going to ask Ms. Moulton to take just a moment for the public and folks here to, to a brief explanation of the Community Facilities District.
Supervisors, a Community Facilities District is a separate taxing authority within the county. They levy, we levy taxes for them. You are the Board of those districts. Those, those taxes are levied for infrastructure improvement and maintenance.
And the, the budget, I'm sorry for that one. I do not have the notes for that or the Stadium District, please.
Just a second.
I'm sorry, thank you. Which is for, the, Rocking Cave, $4,879,332.
Everyone's thumbs up, so I think we're okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Everybody's nodding.
Okay, thank you. And so do we have anyone present to speak in opposition of the Rocking Cave South Community Facilities District Board? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
So, second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please? Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gidi Hava? Yes, thank you. Item passes 5-0. And now we're on Stadium District Board, Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Gidi Hava. Ms. Moulton, if you would, provide those dollars and figures for the Board, please.
The Stadium District budget is $8,826,776. It does not have a property tax associated.
I'm sorry, can you speak right into the mic, please? Thank you.
The Stadium District budget is $8,826,776, and it does not have a property tax associated with it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone present to speak in opposition of the presented budget for the Stadium District Board? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please? Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gidi Hava? Yes, item passes 5-0. Now we're on Item 12, Wildflower Community Facilities District, Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Gidi Hava. The Wildflower Community District tax levy is a total of $923.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition of the Wildflower Community Facilities District? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gidi Hava? Yes, thank you. Now we're sitting as the Board of Supervisors. Item number 13 is the review and adoption of the tentative county budget for fiscal year 2324. Administrator Lesher.
Again, you have before you members of the Board, the tentative budget, excuse me, general fund, total budget of $1,760,492,353 for a total tax, a primary tax rate of 5.1048. And Chair Gidi Hava, I believe that while Supervisor Christie's comment was during a process piece, that it may be more appropriate to be discussed at this time as part of the, or the budget?
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition of the proposed budget for the county? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion Supervisor Christie.
I would like to suggest that we postpone and delay the implementation of the C-Biz employment study and compensation study for a year and not include it in this budget.
Are we making it in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve the budget as it is. So this would be a substitute motion that you're requesting that the C-Biz salary and the compensation study be removed from this budget?
Correct.
Okay, and then there, so Supervisor Christie moved that item, Supervisor Bronson seconded. Any discussion? I won't be able to support that because I do think that our employees have been waiting significantly a long time for the results of the study, and I'd like at least to have the opportunity to be able to compensate our employees fairly. But, so we have a motion and a second, I'll ask for, oh, Supervisor Bronson, did you?
And I think as we adopt this, and this is an unknown, and Ms. Lesher mentioned, we still don't have a state budget, we still don't know what the cost shifts are, and so we're in unknown territory at this point.
Administrator Lesher.
That is correct, but Chair Gidi Hava, Supervisor Bronson, the amount that we include in the budget of the state share of the cost shifts, we use last year's number so that we do know what that might be, and it is embedded in this, and then it'll always be one year behind for just that reason, because at the time you'd be going through budget adoption, we would not know that number.
And Madam?
And that's in the policy.
I think we had Supervisor Heinz, you had a quick comment.
I did, thank you.
I'll call on you Supervisor Christie.
Just to clarify where, I probably should already know this, but where are we at with the study? It's totally complete, ready to implement, ready to go, or is this something that we're still waiting for some components or analysis of, or where, where are we?
Chair Gidi Hava and Supervisor Heinz, the HR Department has been starting about a week and a half ago, meeting with each department director to review that individual directors, what they believe to be accurate for their department versus the results of the study, and making sure that we have, we have been accurate in that study.
Any, and I guess my follow-up would be any idea on, like, at what point would we need to start doing that? Obviously, you probably figured that out in the 14 million thing, but like, when would that start?
Chair Gidi Hava, Supervisor Heinz would be looking to implement on, on July 1st.
And Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
Just to clarify, this, my motion would, would be to defer it for a year.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think it's already been articulated, basically, we would be taking out the compensation, the results of the compensation study and not implementing those changes to employee salaries based on that compensation study, I'm assuming for a year. So I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Yes. Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Gidi Hava? No, item fails 3-2. And so I'll go ahead and move the adoption of the tentative county budget for fiscal year 2324.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Chair Gidi Hava.
Supervisor Scott.
I want to thank Ms. Lesher and her team from Finance for the memorandum that was shared with the Board yesterday, sharing the responses to a lot of questions that came from Board offices, including ours. I think probably the most significant response for me in terms of knowing the process that county staff went through and also the overall construction of the budget, was the explanation we got on how base budgets were determined, and also the process for consideration of supplemental requests. Very much appreciated that detail. Very much appreciated also that the major focus areas of the budget being, the county being an employer of choice, critical infrastructure, financial stability, and also justice and law enforcement were considered when supplemental requests from the departments were reviewed first by the deputy county administrators and then by the county administrator. This Board passed in 2021 Board Policy D2213, which deals with state cost shifts and shows the county taxpayer how those state cost shifts impact our budget. We did not put it in place last year in terms of the calculation of the overall tax rate, but I think it's appropriate that we put it in place this year, especially since $112 million of state cost shifts are documented in the budget. That's 16 million more than the previous fiscal year, and it's 27% roughly of the general fund primary property tax. Our state, just like over 40 other states, has a balanced budget amendment. We also, the voters of Arizona, added another amendment to the Constitution of the state in 1992 that said that you have to have a supermajority to pass any revenue measure through the legislature. And as a result, what the legislature does in times of fiscal crisis such as the Great Recession from 2008 to 2010 is either cut spending or shift costs to local governments, and that's what they've been doing, and I think it's time that we put in place the policy that the Board passed back in 2021. Even having done that, this will still be, as Ms. Lesher documented in the Budget Transmittal Memo, the second lowest overall property tax rate in the last 10 years. Also appreciated the responses that we got with regard to the funds in the budget for inflation contingency, how vacancy savings were calculated, how the long-term funding for, for PEGO, and also overhead calculations. Our, our team also appreciated the opportunity to review individual department budgets and follow up with department heads as needed. As Ms. Lesher said, this is a recommended budget, and I think our responsibility as supervisors is to ask as many questions as possible to learn not only why it was developed, but how it was developed. And, and my reason for seconding the motion and for approving the tentative budget when we vote on it is that I think it's a prudent and fiscal, a prudent fiscal document that was carefully and deliberately crafted over time, and I think it's responsive to both our community needs and community priorities. Thank you Chair Gidi Hava.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Supervisor Heinz?
Thank you, and I, I was going to make a case here for some additional resources for affordable housing and street living homeless, but we got this amazing letter from Tony Penn at United Way that I'm just going to read. So, members of the Board, United Way of Tucson and Southern Arizona's Financial Wellness Partnership regularly convenes staff from more than 25 nonprofits, government offices, financial institutions, and academic departments for discussions and collaborative work related to eviction prevention and financial empowerment. Addressing the affordable housing crisis in Pima County is an ongoing priority for our group. We are grateful for the urgent attention and resources that the Board of Supervisors have given to the affordable housing crisis, including the creation of the Regional Affordable Housing Commission and support for their recommendations. Our group also hopes that the Board will consider increasing resources for affordable housing in Pima County. Like many communities across the country, we have not been building enough housing in Pima County since 2008. Data and analysis suggests that our state is currently on track to meet less than 10% of the 143,998 affordable units needed for low-income renters across Arizona, in Arizona, excuse me, by June 2026. We see that more and more community members are finding themselves unable to afford and access any housing at all. According to the latest points in time count data, 2,227 people in Tucson and Pima County are now unhoused, a 68% increase since 2020. Emergency shelters, particularly low-barrier shelters, routinely find themselves maxed out with no beds available to meet the growing need. And those who are currently housed are also struggling to hold on as a limited housing supply contributes to skyrocketing rent costs. Our community partners recognize the urgency and are ready to step up to start developing new housing. The recent Pima County Community and Workforce Development Affordable Housing Gap Funding RFP was only open for a month, and even on that limited timeline, more than $10 million in project proposals came in. In alignment with our Financial Wellness Partnership participants, I strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to prioritize affordable housing access or support. Thanks for all you do, Tony Penn. And I could not have said it better myself. I think we need to, I think the one part, I agree with, with Supervisor I think we need to, I think the one part, I agree with Supervisor Scott, this is a very well-thought-through budget that responds to many of the needs of the county. I just believe that $5 million that we did not even use all of this time is wholly inadequate to address affordable housing. And I would like to see, but I also respect that we can't just print money. So I would like to see us kick up the primary rate three cents and dedicate anything that that brings into additional funding for affordable housing. Oh, I guess that would be a substitute motion if anyone cares to, but I, or we can talk about it first, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that it was one of the reasons why we, our office had requested, you know, 5 million to go directly towards affordable housing. I don't know that that has resulted in as much because of the eviction prevention and that, that issue at this point. But I do think that we have the opportunity there to do more and maybe looking at that amount that is already dedicated in the budget to really be like more specific and purposeful about how that funding is utilized. I think that I would be really comfortable doing that because at this point, I, I really don't want to increase the tax rate. I'm not sure that we would have support to do it. But also, I think that we need to utilize the, the funding that's already been allocated in a more strategic way. But, but I understand the intent because I, I agree that we have, we have an issue. Administrator Lesher.
If I may, Chair Gudihalva, just a reminder, we had, $5 million was set aside in last year's budget for affordable housing. Took a little bit of time to get the Affordable Housing Commission up and moving. They are now fully seated and have begun their processes to distribute the funds. We continued that for an additional 5 million this year. So the Affordable Housing Commission will have an opportunity to make recommendations to the board for the five in this year and whatever remains in last year's funding.
And I think that it's important for the commission to hear what Supervisor Heinz is saying and what we're hearing from our community is that we need more affordable housing. Like that's, that is the goal. And so whatever projects that are coming forward that allow that capacity and increase it even incrementally, I think is a real step forward.
Chair Gudihalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Aligned with the concerns that Supervisor Heinz brought up during the last Legislative Policy Committee meeting for the County Supervisors Association, when County Supervisors Association staff was reviewing the state budget, it was pointed out that $150 million of new money is going to go into the Housing Trust Fund. And there are also going to be a significant number of grants that specifically will address homelessness. And I asked CSA staff to follow up with supervisors to find out how counties could either use matching funds to avail themselves of some of the funds in the Housing Trust Fund or how we might apply for some of those grants that are targeted towards homelessness. And I hope that we will get that information from CSA staff soon.
Great.
One, just one.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. Just one, I guess, to staff and, or to Administrator Lesher, if there is capacity, for example, if inflation, if inflation sort of adjustments or anticipated need is not, you know, if those items are not wholly used up, can any delta be redirected into this if, if we have sufficient number of folks asking to be building these kinds of projects?
Chair Gudihalva and Supervisor Heinz, as we, through the course of the year, provide monthly reports. Should at any time the Board of Supervisors wish to, to make changes in the budget or reallocate funds or address the delta, that would be up to the policy direction of the board during the fiscal year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So I believe we have a motion, a second.
Ma'am?
Oh, yes.
Chair Gudihalva, I just have one question.
And Ms. Lesher.
Was there any sense of direction regarding Justice of the Peace Carroll's request to, okay, thank you.
I'm, I, I think that I would be comfortable. Does anyone have any objection?
$61,000.
It was $61,000.
And he's taking over five, right? Part of five. She's pulled five, right?
I'm assuming if I'm.
Next year it'll be 5 million.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is asking staff to evaluate and address within the current tax structure.
Yes.
If possible.
I think that sounds fair. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, again, what are we gonna be voting on?
We're voting on the budget as presented, the 1.76 plus billion.
So this issue that Dr. or Supervisor Heinz was talking about, that's not part of the?
No, we were just, it was a discussion, it didn't have a second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, as submitted by administration. Go ahead and have a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gudihalva? Yes. Item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Now we're moving on to 14. This is the review and adoption of the debt service tentative county budget for fiscal year 23-24. Administrator Lesher.
Thank you Chair Gudihalva, and we are looking for a review and adoption of a tentative debt service budget of $103,035,321 and a tax rate of 22 cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone present here to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? Ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gudihalva? Yes, item passes 5-0. Okay, so we've addressed, we've done executive session. We're going to go ahead and, let's see. Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so now we're at Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards, Rocking Case South Community Facilities District Board.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
I'll move the item. Yeah, I'm sorry. Resolution number 2023-RK1.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor, a motion by Supervisor Christie, second by Supervisor Bronson. Do we have any discussion? Does this, we can just do all in favor, right? Yeah, we don't have to roll call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And now we are on item 18, approval of the consent calendar. I'll move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And now we're on item 19, mining legislation resolution. This would be resolution number 202312 of the Board of Supervisors opposing the permitting of Mining Needs Act and Mining Regulatory Clarity Act and supporting meaningful mining reform. This was submitted by Supervisor Scott.
I will move the item.
I'll second.
Thank you. Chair Gudihalva, I want to acknowledge staff from the county administrator, county administrator's office, the county attorney's office, and also the Office of Sustainability and Conservation for assisting in the drafting of this resolution. And it's important to point out for the public that the most significant mining law in our country was passed 40 years before Arizona became a state.
That's right.
In 1872. And the two bills that this resolution opposes are piecemeal in their scope, and they are not examples of meaningful mining reform, which is another thing that the resolution calls for. These two pieces of legislation, one that was introduced in the Senate, one introduced in the House, would allow mining companies to dump tailings and other waste on public lands, even when they do not own the rights to those lands. It would reverse county, I'm sorry, it would reverse court decisions that Pima County has supported in the furtherance of the protection of public lands. Our members of the House and Senate should oppose both these bills. Frankly, I find it truly a disappointment that our senior senator, Kirsten Sinema, has signed on as a co-sponsor to the Senate legislation. You would think that she or her staff would have been in contact with staff from the second-largest county in her state, but it appears that in this matter, as well as many others, that she has chosen to keep her own counsel. I certainly hope that Senator Kelly, Congressman Siskomani, and Congressman Gudihalva will oppose this legis, both pieces of legislation. And I also hope that all members of Congress and the Biden administration should work together to overhaul our nation's main mining law. It's unrealistic to conceive of a law passed during the Grant administration providing sufficient guidance and safeguards to the conduct of mining in our country. Thank you Chair Gudihalva.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? Supervisor Bronson and Supervisor Christie.
I will be supporting this for two reasons. Number one, this, the way this legislation is written, it's really a taking if they can dump tailings on, on land that is not under their ownership. And then number two, if you look at the other piece where you are letting Chinese or foreign nationals come in, and just like they did with our water, we've got problems. So I will be supporting this. I don't know what an optimal solution is, but certainly this is going in the wrong direction.
Thank you Supervisor Christie.
Thank you Madam Chair. Once again, we have before us probably the fourth resolution against mining and mining issues before this board. This board does not have the authority to stop mining or to do anything to prevent it. That is in the realm of Washington DC and the agencies there, as well as in the courts. We heard from the extreme environmental industry here at, a call to the audience with their misleading statements, their twisting of facts, their out-and-out lies, particularly Save the Santa Rita's have done more harm for our economy, for our livelihood, for jobs, for growth in Pima County by putting in roadblocks in the, through the legal system rather than working with the mining owners to try to make them into our community, bring them in onboard so we can put food on people's tables, so we can provide jobs for families, so we can grow as a community. One of the things that they say you can never bring back, bring back is a missed opportunity. Pima County has been a deficit in missing opportunities on these levels and fighting mining when it is our number one core industry, or at least part of the five Cs. A lot of the mining activity we see is on sacred lands. This particular situation with Hud Bay, and this is really directed at Hud Bay, and the Rosemont Mine was when the eastern slopes were tied up in courts. It gave Hud Bay the opportunity to take a break and look at the other properties that Hud Bay owned privately. And lo and behold, they found a treasure trove of copper and other related minerals that gave them the opportunity to explore it more. And the Rosemont Mine might be secondary, if not even abandoned, at this particular point because the copper world issue has shown that it is, is much more profitable and has much more opportunities than the Rosemont Mine. So I suppose tying it up in the courts did Hud Bay a favor and did our community a favor. So we heard also that from the extreme environmentalists that representative here that using sweeping general statements about millions and billions of this and millions and billions of that and gallons of this reduction in property values, all kinds of fear tactics, tactics that have kept this thing tied up in court and kept Pima County from growing, from providing jobs, from economic and workforce development. And I will be voting against this. And it's time we, as a community, embrace the mining industry. For God's sake, we've got Caterpillar right down the street. And what do they provide? Something that is right in our own backyard. So Madam Chair, this is something that I, that has been ongoing, and we have missed opportunities. And this is a bad resolution, and it joins the ranks of the other bad resolutions that this board has presented over the years. Thank you Madam Chair.
I'm gonna be supporting this. I think that that doesn't come as a surprise, but I do, I do think it's valuable for us to consider the role of Pima County and why people come to visit. And tourism is one of our important revenue sources as well. You know, both acts allow mining companies to use, occupy, and conduct operations on public land with or without the discovery of valuable mineral deposits. And I agree and appreciate the three members from Save the Santa Rita's that came down to talk to us about what the impact would be on our lands. So with that, do we have any other discussion?
Chair Gudihalva.
Supervisor Scott.
I'm sorry Supervisor Heinz, you haven't had a chance to talk yet, go ahead.
Supervisor Heinz, that's why I asked, I'm like, anyone else?
Right, so I, I really appreciated hearing from the Save the Santa Rita's too. And look, I mean, Canadians aren't supposed to be jerks, right? This is, this is so not Canadian, right? This is, so shame on Hud Bay and for shame on my friend and former colleague in the legislature, Kirsten Sinema, who when I served with her had fluorescent hair and was such a lefty nutbag communist, literally a member of the Communist Party, that I personally refused to take pictures with her. She never knew that. Hopefully she doesn't pay any attention to the meeting, so I don't think a lot of people maybe do. But anyway, she knows better too. So shame on, shame on Kirsten Sinema. We are in a desert southwest area. Water, water, water. Okay? So I don't know, I'm not sure what she was thinking. And I sure as heck don't appreciate the Canadians trying to, to steal all this water from us and then export the copper for their own devices. Not cool. So I support this.
Thank you Supervisor Scott.
I just wanted to say, in, in response to some of the points that Supervisor Christie made, that the fourth resolution says, "The Pima County Board of Supervisors directs that communications to our congressional delegation emphasize Pima County's support for meaningful mining reform and our record of supporting mining projects in Pima County that adhere to local health, safety, and conservation guidelines." I am not anti-mining. I don't think how you conceivably could be, but I, I do think that this legislation undermines court decisions that protect public lands and that ensure that mining companies are respectful of, of public lands and their myriad of uses. And then I think perhaps one of the most important pieces of this resolution, and I would hope that all of us would agree to this, is that we oppose piecemeal legislation that does not address the issue of mining reform comprehensively. That is something that all of Congress needs to take on moving forward. Again, the, the mining law of 1872 is still the governing legislation in this country. That's ridiculous. And that's a failure of leadership on the part of Congress and every presidential administration dating back to that time. So it's not, this is not anti-mining. This is anti-abuse of public lands.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie and then we'll vote.
May I indulge myself to have the last word over Supervisor Scott again? This is definitely anti-mining, and Supervisor Scott has made it clear that he's anti-mining with this resolution presentation. Mining has been going on in the Santa Rita's for 100 years. And these words of comprehensive mining reform, nobody knows what that means, and it's not outlined or detailed anywhere in this resolution. It's kind of like immigrant, the immigration system is broken. It's these euphemisms that, that continue to be a problem. And mining has been the backbone of our economy and our state for decades, since its inception. Mining takes place throughout the state, throughout Pima County, and it has for decades. And I think mining practices have improved and have become more sensitive and more highly technical since the 50s and 60s, and that these, these scare tactics of what we hear from the, the mining, anti-mining community have been, have been nothing more than that, just scare tactics. And I'm very sad when I look around our community and see destitute folks looking for work, and here's an opportunity for that right in our own backyard. And I'm very sad to look at other industries thinking of coming to Tucson, knowing how anti-business, anti-industry, anti-mining the Board of Supervisors has been with resolutions like this. Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you. I, I would like to remind everyone that we have vacancies here in Pima County. So if anyone's looking for a job, come on down. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gudihalva? Yes, item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. We've already addressed item 20, and now we're on 21. and now we're on 21, Attractions and Tourism Outside Agency Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 22-23. I would like to note, and I wanted to thank Mr. Larry Starks for coming and advocating for the Tucson Juneteenth Festival, which is on this list here. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on, we have 22 and 23 are both anti-reciteering revolving funds. 22 is 5,000 to homicide survivors and 23 is 5,000 for 88 crime. I'll go ahead and move both those items. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we've addressed 24. 25 is final plat with assurances.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'll move the item.
Second. Have a motion and a second, a motion by Supervisor Christie, second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. We have items 20, I'm trying to see. Is there any opposition in taking these items 26 through 28 together?
Madam Chair, just a comment on 28.
Supervisor Christie.
I will be supporting it, but I just want to make a notation to the board and to the administration on 28. Under recommendation, it says it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors apply for deeds for the properties. The list of properties can be find on the, found on the Pima County Real Property Services website. And the website is, and it gives it, but there is no WWW before it. And then after you do input the WWW, it goes to the next page where there's nothing listed.
Okay.
Chergar Hala, Supervisor Christie, thank you. And I will work with the departments to make sure we correct that information. Thank you.
But I will be supporting.
Thank you. So we're going to move item 26, abandonment via vacation. 27 is dedication of a right of way on northeast corner of Cloud Road and Sabino Canyon Road. And then 28 is a treasured deed, application for treasured deed for unredained properties totaling 2,400 parcels. I'll go ahead and move all three items.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 29 is community and workforce development. This is contract for the city of South Tucson for the John Valenzuela Youth Center. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Heinz. I'm going to support this, but I understand that this has been a consistent amount over a period of time. And I'd just like some consideration on inflation and those kind of things to look at that. So have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. 30, facilities management. This is to provide a lease for the property located at 33 North Zone to Delaware Investment Corporation. I'll move the item. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Procurement, we have, is, does anyone wish to take this 31, 32, 33 or 34 separate?
Can we extend it to 35, 36 and 37?
Sure. So I have, well, we'll just go to, from 31 to 36. Okay, I'll go ahead and move the items.
Second.
The motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on grant application acceptance 37. I'll go ahead, and did we want to take these separately? Supervisor Christie, you mentioned just.
I'm sorry, which?
37 through 41.
No. I would like to take 38, 39 and 41 separate.
So we'll go ahead and move item 37. This is acceptance of the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to provide ACJC Arizona Disposition Reporting System. I'll move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 38, Acceptance of Environmental Quality Protection Agency to provide expanding localized air quality monitoring at Pima County Schools to address environmental justice grant award. I'll go ahead and move this item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
If you read the background, it says it all. Establish a network of low-cost sensors measuring particular matter and gaseous pollutants in 30 Pima County schools with an emphasis on underserved communities that have a higher risk of cumulative exposure to air pollutants due to their proximity to more air pollution sources. And it is to develop and implement community science education plans at schools to educate students about air pollution and its connection to environmental justice. And this obviously is a grant that we need to send the money back and to say no to. Thank you Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'm happy to move. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Oh, I already did. We already did motion and second. It's, we're just, it's just mushing together. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. 39, Acceptance of Health Grant, National Association of County and City Health Officials to Provide Wastewater Surveillance. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
This is another similar situation that where we should send the money back even though it's less than $10,000. It states in the background, "We will also develop a wastewater surveillance data sharing communications strategy and potential expansion of Pima County's wastewater surveillance efforts." Surveillance is the key here. And I must note that in retroactive, it states that about the start date of the agreement and that the warning and admonition is if this grant is not accepted, we will lose the funding for this small but valuable project. Let's lose the funding and send it back. Thank you Madam Chair.
Okay. Do motion? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item 40 is accepting of Pima Animal, for acceptance for Pima Animal Care Center. Friends of Pima Animal Care Center PAC to Provide PAC Mobile Medical Unit Animal Care Supervisor Funding Agreement. I'll go ahead and move the item. I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. This board loves the animals. Then there's never any discussion about it. Item 41, Acceptance of Project Design Construction Stratford Artworks to provide a joint development subaward for renovation of Theatro Carmen. I'll move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Heinz. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'll be voting against this again. This is a city of Tucson project. It should not be included in Pima County's efforts. Thank you.
Supervisor Bronson.
I, I really like what Theatro is doing, but I agree with my colleague Supervisor Christie. This should be funded through the city of Tucson, not Pima County.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Okay, then we, 42 has been continued. We have.
Madam Chair, how about 43, 44?
No, that's, that's a hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, I know, I was with you, but no.
I'm trying.
So I know, so we have 43. We have several hearings actually. 43 is a bingo license. Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move the item. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Then we have Development Services. This is a rezoning ordinance. We have, is there anybody that wishes to separate? Otherwise I'll move 44 and 48 together. 44 through 48.
Can you do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and is that?
Close the public hearing.
Yes, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move 44 through 48 because they're all hearing rezoning ordinances. Do you want me to list them all?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, 44 is the ordinance 2023-7, the Lopez family for colossal cave road rezoning. 45 is ordinance number 2023-8. This is a Drexel Road rezoning. 46 is rezoning resolution 2023-14 for Aldridge Carroll Avenue rezoning. 47 is resolution 2023-15 for Andrade, Wilmont, South Wilmont Road rezoning. And then 48 is a resolution number 2023-16, Ideal Partners LLC for the Headley Road Plan Amendment. So I had a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And now we're on item 49 and we do have a speaker. Okay, so this is a hearing for the Code Text Amendment and Jennifer Barrosso.
Good afternoon, Chergar Hala.
Thank you for your patience.
No worries, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Barrosso and I'm the government liaison for the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association. I'll be quick. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak before you today on the proposed changes to the Pima County ordinance regarding the seller's warranty of contributed sanitary sewer systems. I'd like to thank county staff who sought our input, met with us, offered great collaborative discussion and adjusted their timeline according to the feedback they received. Sab was comfortable with the proposed change and would only ask that as this new standard is brought into effect, you consider contractors are notified in writing that they've been asked to make repairs citing where they're out of compliance. The department and contractors collaborate on a timeline for correcting the issue and that they are, we are provided the opportunity to review the process's effectiveness in a year's time from both the regional wastewater regulation departments standpoint as well as the contracting community standpoint. Again, thank you for the consideration and I'm open to answering any questions if you have any.
Any questions? No. Thank you so much and appreciate you.
Oh, actually, one comment.
Supervisor Bronson.
I think those are very, your requests are very reasonable and I think we need to follow up with them. So thank you.
Chergar Hala, Supervisor Bronson, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so any others who wish to speak on this item? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, the Code Text Amendment and move the item. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on Board of Supervisors Addendum, item 3. This, oh.
No, I think we did.
That's a protocol.
Sorry, okay. It's, we've gone around to this. Okay, so item 3 is the Baj Nahuacho Ita Tuk Benny.
Say that again.
I can't, I can't. I did phonetic here. Baj, I listened to it several times because I don't want to butcher it. So the Baj Nahuacho Ita Tuk Benny, Grand Canyon National Monument, Resolution Number 23, 2023-17, the Board of Supervisors in support of President Joe Biden creating a Baj Nahuacho Ita Benny, Grand Canyon National Monument in Northern Arizona. I will move the item. Second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I have a constituent's letter that I think encapsulates a very good point about this resolution and it'll give you the opportunity to address it. But I will not be supporting this and I think the reason why is encased in my constituent's concern. And she states that over 1.1 million acres on these Mohave County Tribal Reservation lands in resolution that before us includes rich uranium and the watershed that supports 40 million people. Mohave County is one of the poorest counties in Arizona and needs not only jobs but less intrusion by the federal government. A national monument controlled by the federal government provides more government overreach that does not benefit the people. The source of uranium in Mohave County is one of the richest sources of uranium in the United States and could support US nuclear electricity companies here in Arizona. Currently, the United States imports 60% of uranium from our enemies, Russia and China. Our state of Arizona and each of our counties needs to be independently supported and have the control over our local economies and opportunities for financial independence. Why is Congressional District 7 Raul Grahava and District 5 Supervisor Adalita Grahava supporting and promoting this intrusion? Why aren't the Grahavas instead of working to promote and provide jobs and economic growth? The beauty of the Mohave County area will remain and be enjoyed without designation as a national monument. Support Mohave County for less government control. I will be voting against this.
Thank you. I do want it noted that several tribes have a Supai, Hopi, Kaibab, Las Vegas Band of Peoty Indians, the Mopa Band, I mean, there's several that have all joined together in a coalition requesting that the Biden administration designate this area to protect it from threats that you outlined, which your mining is one of them. So I have a motion in a second. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay Supervisor Bronson?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes, and to explain my vote, I was actually at the Grand Canyon for the first time in the past two weeks.
Oh my gosh, beautiful. Yeah.
How long have you lived?
Hey, I've been a state legislator too.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chergar Hala? Yes, thank you. Item passes 4-1. Very exciting, bless you. Now we're on item 5, Pay As You Go, Paygo Road Repair Program. This is a request by Supervisor Christie to, it's discussion, direction, action regarding scenarios from county administration to provide adequate continual and/or replacement funding for sources, ensuring that Pima County's Paygo Road Program
and/or replacement funding for sources, ensuring that Pima County's Paygo Road Program fulfills the promise made by unanimous vote. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to direct attention to the county administrator's May 12th letter entitled Additional Information, Pay As You Go Road Repair Program. I find a lot of revisionist rewriting of history here. I was part of the Board of Supervisors that approved Paygo back in 2019. And in the initial background report of this memorandum, it states, "When the Pima County Department of Transportation embarked on the 10-year pavement repair and preservation program, the initial scenario projection indicated that at the end of the program, the average pavement condition index PCI rating for the county roadway network would be 80." No, the PCI was 80 or better, not the average. If we go to a chart that shows roads currently in very poor condition, shown in this table, 8.61 miles of roads currently are in the very poor condition. What happened to failed roads? Why is it now very poor condition? This means based on the guiding principles, the current PDOT funding levels will be able to repair all roads that fall into very poor condition. Again, why aren't they treated as failed roads as they were back in 2019? And then it says in this memorandum, "It should be noted that the 10-year plan never intended that all roads would be in good or very good condition at the end of the program." That's not true. Then it states, "If the Board of Supervisors wanted to change the original program to now achieve a goal of having all roads in very good and very good and good condition, the additional funding," and it goes on about that. But that was the original promise, that the roads would be in very good or good condition, at least at 80% or higher. Then it states, "The timing of when specific roads will be repaired is not something that can be determined beyond the one-year projection." Then why was it labeled as a 10-year plan? States further, "As noted above, there is an equity limitation in using general fund paygo allocations for unincorporated county roadways that impose a limit of just under $300 million." That was 97 bond money, based in 97. There's been, I think, a substantial cost of living increase and that amount of money for that triggering cap limit needs to be reevaluated and recalibrated to reflect today's dollars, not $1997. States further, "Increasing the amount of PDOT revenues for road repair would require additional cuts to positions or other programs which were considered but are not recommended due to the decrease in service that would be caused." I'm assuming you're talking about PDOT positions. Is that what, are those that would have to be, and the programs as well would be PDOT? Then it goes on to suggest scenarios. One through five, which let me get to that in just a second. And then I go back to a November 5th, 2019 memorandum that stipulates, "The good news is that if the Board adopts the attached Board policy and follows the policy for the next 10 years by allocating the recommended amount for road repair, it appears that the condition of all of our unincorporated local arterial and collector roads will be in at least good condition by 2930 fiscal year." And then we do have the capital campaigns list. In any event, there was a promise made back in 2019 that Pima County had through this Paygo Road Repair Plan made a promise that all roads in unincorporated Pima County would be repaired by, within 10 years. Didn't worry about the amount of money being spent, that was a given. It's the timeline and the promise that the roads would be repaired, all roads, in 10 years. So going back to the scenarios which were presented, there was scenario one that eliminates specific items in the 2324 recommended budget. And it lists those items. I've gone over those items. They seem to be justifiably able to be reviewed to the point of removed. Scenario two, reduce general fund expenses and hold filling vacancies. This stipulates that a review of all general fund and general fund funded departments was undertaken to identify a possible $15 million of general fund dollars for the pavement repair and preservation program. The proposed reductions would include reducing the base budgets by 1.5% and impose an additional four-month hiring freeze. Good ideas. So therefore, based on the recommendations of scenario one and scenario two, and I'd like to thank the county administrator for providing those and the PDOT staff as well. In addition to noting that this really shouldn't be put into a revisionist history, even though the minutes of that meeting where it was divulged that it would be 10 years to fix our roads, staff recommends approval of the following, these are the minutes of that meeting. Fix our roads in 10 years. So Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Supervisors move and adopt a hybrid, hybrid recommendation of including scenarios one and scenarios two of eliminating the presented capital improvement plans or I should say the plans that are in the policy in the order of being removed under scenario one. And then the reduction of 1.5% of the base budgets within the county and imposing an additional four-month hiring freeze. Scenario one and scenario two to hybrid model of that. And that would then, I believe, address our issue of keeping our promise.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion a second by Supervisor Bronson or Christie and then Bronson. And then I know that our administrator wanted to respond. Did you have a comment Supervisor Bronson?
Well, just that I concur with Supervisor Christie. We made some commitment and we're not keeping that commitment. I'm not sure, well, that's a no.
Administrator Lesher and then I'll call on.
Chair Ghaliba and members of the Board, I absolutely believe we're keeping the commitment and want to be clear about that. What we had indicated when the Board began the Paygo program was that the roads would be, we would be fixing the roads in 10 years. That is occurring. The $225 million dedicated to spending that is occurring. The thing that has, that was different from the initial motion was then the Board went on to make the determination that it wanted to frontload funding. And so we did have some modifications to those initial motions. I think that part of what I'm hearing today is you're looking at, you know, an initial motion, some language today, and there's been some motions made along the way and some actions of the Board. That said, should the Board wish to spend an additional $15 million in roads, at this point, we have recommended a variety of ways in which that might occur. I do, I do believe we're keeping the promise. We do have, you know, Catherine Skinner is our Director of the Department of Transportation, Carmine DeBonus Deputy County Administrator. I might, I'll just see if they have anything they'd want to add at this point, but they are also here to respond to questions.
Madam Chair, before they start today.
Please Supervisor Heinz had a question.
And just more of a comment, I mean, in looking, wait, was the administrator, did you want to have staff talk before I?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, okay, sorry, I checked on my glasses so I can barely see the microphone, so. I mean, we've, we've far exceeded the promises to the community because my understanding was we're looking at 2030. Well, it's 2023 last I checked and we've frontloaded the heck out of this program by bonding for $150 million to like super accelerate this, right? So what, four plus years of repairs have all been done, right? They're like, so I don't know, I think that's, it's a heck of a lot more than what we're doing for affordable housing. Just to kind of keep bringing it back to that, if we can bond and if we can accelerate road repair, $150 million of road repair, I mean, we should be able to do 10 or 15 million for, for street living homeless, but that's kind of a separate issue. So I think we've done really well on this, more than kept but exceeded our promises. And I don't know, I think this is kind of a nothing burger.
Thank you Supervisor Christie and then.
Yeah, just very quickly, I do want to just mention briefly, the other scenarios that were provided by the county administrator all include raising taxes. So from my standpoint, those are off the table and that's why I'm supporting scenarios one and two.
Supervisor Scott?
Thank you Chair Ghaliba. I think it's important for the public to know that the county's commitment is unwavering, which is to use local and state funding to repair and maintain roads. I was proud to join the majority of this Board to support accelerating the program. We put an additional $50 million into the program each one of the two fiscal years that we've been responsible for. Just like the previous Board did the same thing. They infused an additional $50 million into the program in the last fiscal year they were responsible for. We took advantage of favorable interest rates and the capacity of the road building industry to do the work. But now we need to devote more resources to maintenance because we fixed more roads than originally planned during the first four years of the program. The worst roads first philosophy remains in place. Arterials and collectors have the largest amount of very poor roads and it's appropriate to give them more attention in the coming fiscal year as the formula that was presented to us demonstrates so that we can keep the commitment made to fix the worst roads first. I do think it was really important, and the administration did this in the memorandum, to address the letter that we got from the Transportation Advisory Committee calling us, calling on us to infuse an additional $15 million into the program in the next fiscal year. But I was very taken with a quote from page six, Ms. Lesher of your memo that says the following, "Advancing another $15 million to address all roads that would slip into very poor condition by the end of fiscal year 202324 seems like a quick fix. But due to the constant deterioration of pavement, it only serves as a fix for that single moment in time. Developing a program that balances the investment in repair with the required preservation treatments allows for a sustainable pavement management system. The guiding principles provide assurances that there will continue to be an investment in mill and pave projects for the worst roads and investment to our local road network." I will say to Mr. Debonus and Ms. Skinner that I do think the Board needs some additional information on how the new ratings align with industry standards. That was referenced in a memorandum a few weeks ago, but I'd like some more detail on those industry standards and how the guiding principles align with them than we've gotten before. But bottom line is, we have a plan, we're carrying it out and the public can be assured that the priority of fixing and maintaining roads is unchanged.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that the, one of the real issues that residents of Pima County have had with their roads is yes, the arterials and the collectors definitely are, are, are and or were in a very deplorable state, state of lack of repair. But it's the local roads that are the ones that really upset the community because they have been paying property taxes for decades and in decades, the roads in front of their homes have not been touched. And to back that up, we were provided in that memorandum a very lengthy list of local roads. Now, this is according to 2020 calculations. And I'm wondering why we are being showed 2020 items here that don't apply anymore, particularly when we just paid for a new rating of the roads that this 2020 is outdated. But the local roads under the way we're going will not be touched for years. And those are the ones that the people are expecting to be fixed in their neighborhoods, at their front stoop, at the end of their sidewalk when they get the mail. They see their local roads not being touched in the manner that we promised under the current plan. And that's the part of the promise that I really believe is the most important one that we maintain. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, I concur. And I don't think it's either are, I think we have to do both that. So we need, we need to continue with the road, with the pavement improvement, do the local roads and find some way to make that happen. Because right now, we're concentrating on arterials and collectors.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Ghaliba? No, item fails 3-2. Okay, with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting in favor. All right, now we're on item six, Actions Related to COVID-19 Vaccination Mandates for County Employees. This is the discussion that we've had several times on the dais and Supervisor Christie has put it on our agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to memorialize the items that the Chair alluded to that we've discussed in the past. This basically memorializes and makes whole, I think, a pretty, pretty bad injustice that we perpetrated upon employees during the COVID crisis. A couple of questions real quick. Ms. Lesher, is there any information you can give on the effect of these items as far as how many employees were terminated? How many were hired back? What is the status of their pay plan as opposed to what it was before they were fired? And all their benefits and the seniority? Where are we on this as far, you know, after all, we are the employer of choice.
We want to.
We have to be the employer of choice. This, this action that we took certainly does not commend itself to being an employer of choice. You either follow what we mandate or you'll be fired. So my question basically is, first of all, where are we on all these items? And second of all, what is, what is the impact of that mandate?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Ghaliba and Supervisor Christie, when you say where are we with all of those items? What you're looking to do today might be modifying current policy. So we have, we're not, you're providing us something new. So to say, where are we regarding that? What I can do is give you a snapshot of where we are with some of our employees and who left, et cetera. As I mentioned before, we have, of those, any employee who was terminated had that right to appeal. If they appealed, they were returned to county employment if they chose that. They did come back, those who were brought back retained their titles, pay, any adjustments and the seniority. So that did occur for the individuals who were brought back at that time. We had one individual that had a different situation going through the Merit Commission and my notes are that payment of back pay was given to that individual. It was not, my understanding is we had another good group that came out of, I believe they were corrections officers. That was not requested, that is on appeal to the Superior Court right now. So that one is pending, but people who did come back got, retained their titles, seniority and all of that. We did end up, and just was pulling together a few notes, just, we, the result was 236 employees who paid the additional amount of insurance of the 4551 per pay period. And then we were just looking at the claims and part of the reason for that is the incremental cost difference that the county saw in terms of claims from those who were vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And we did have a, it ranged anywhere from 85 to 4629 a month more per member, per month for those who were unvaccinated. There was a lot, including a memo in 21 that explained why there was a differential rate for those who were vaccinated versus unvaccinated. That's, again, that is what's in place today. Those rules are of course no longer in effect, in effect, but that was the policy of the Board at the time.
Yep.
And Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
So Ms. Lesher, you're assuring me that if any terminated employee was rehired, they were rehired at the same rate that they were before they were terminated?
Chair Ghaliba and Supervisor Christie, I believe that to be true and that is my understanding. If you are familiar with any single individual who may have contacted you who believes that that is not the case, I'd be more than happy to meet with them and talk with them.
Okay, and would you assure that at that particular point upon you meeting with them that you would adjust their pay plan to reflect it prior to their being fired?
Chair Ghaliba, Supervisor Christie, not trying to be clever, but just put the caveat that if the termination was for the vaccination related issue only and there were not other issues of which I'm not aware at this time, then we can, we will, we will do that.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, along with those assurances, would you assure that the benefits package that was in place before they were terminated would be resumed as it was before they were terminated?
Chair Ghaliba, Supervisor Christie, I believe that to be true now. I think that the question that we have heard in one of the issues that's come up that has not been, any policy of the Board is to repay anyone who paid a differential, but everyone was returned, when we stopped the mandate and all the rules related to the pandemic, the additional surcharge for those individuals who were unvaccinated ended.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, would you assure that anyone rehired after being terminated would retain the same seniority level with all the benefits thereof?
Yes, Chair Ghaliba, Supervisor Christie, again, it is my understanding that that has occurred. If you know of anyone, individual, happy to, to meet with them.
And how, Madam Chair, how about employees who quit rather than being terminated?
I have known, Chair Ghaliba, Supervisor Christie, individuals who had quit and the reasons necessarily for them leaving are not something that I would have information about.
Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, if those that quit came back and reapplied, would they be handled in the same manner?
Chair Ghaliba, Supervisor Christie, I don't know that they would be handled in the same manner. I can tell you that if, that there are a variety of openings at the county and we would welcome an employee who had been a county employee to return. And as you may recall, you all modified the rule so that anyone that comes back within five years comes back at the rate when they left, I believe is the exact language. But we've all, you modified that, that policy, Jeepers, within the last year. So they would come back under those new policies which do put them back where they left.
So Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, we have in, in effect right now an employment policy that guarantees that anybody terminated would come, would be offered a job back. If they were accept, if they accepted the job offer to come back, they'd be at the same rate they were before they were fired. They'd have the same benefits package and the same seniority. seniority.
And Chair Githyhelva, what I would like to do, Supervisor Christie, our intent is to bring back employees and keep employees. At the beginning of your sentence, anybody who was terminated can come back. There were individuals who never requested to come back, for someone to come back. I am reluctant to look at a new policy where we're saying if anybody who left for any reason wants to come back, we'll pay them back pay and such. I think there may be unique systems or circumstances around those individuals. I will assure you that individuals, if their only reason for leaving is regard is that they could not accept that mandate, it is no longer a policy. We welcome back qualified and good county employees coming back and rejoining the county, and under your policies, they would come back under the rates and the pay adjustments and the leave and all of the standards of their seniority that were in place when they left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No more...
Any other questions? Okay.
One quick...
Yes, Supervisor Heinz.
Great, I just want to make sure that we can get this meeting past 2:00 p.m., so...
Thank you, no, no.
No, no, I'm sorry. I did actually have one, but if I could get, if Administrator Lesher would just clarify for the Board and all three people watching, when was the last time that there was any kind of COVID vaccination requirement as a condition of employment at Pima County? And I mean, a month is fine, it doesn't have to be like a date, time, seven...
Again, Chair Githyhelva, Supervisor Heinz, I'm going to turn to Dr. Garcia. I do not recall the date that we ended that. I want to say September 22, but you name it.
Your mic is off.
Yep.
It's off.
Thank you.
Chair Grahava, Supervisor Heinz, Administrator Lesher, the administrator transmitted a memo on September 20, 2022, and it became effective September 24, 2022.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, real quickly, just to be clear, this is all, this is all COVID-related. That's the only caveat I'm imposing on this.
Thank you, Chair Githyhelva, Supervisor Christie, thank you for that clarification so that we don't bring anybody in. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.